I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have the clerk take the roll, please?
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Onstadt.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
Item four, public comments. We have two speaker cards. Don Allen followed by Tomas Rebesh Rebecca. I apologize to the last spelling, the last name. You could come forward, please. This portion of the agenda is to speak. This portion of the agenda is to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So we don't have any public speaker cards. Okay. Moving on to item five, PL 14-0100, Antara Energy Services, Inc.
Chair Rodriguez.
Before we begin, just some house cleaning. I understand Attorney Linda Ash is representing the Planning Commission this morning and Attorney Jeff Barnes is representing the Planning Department. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it's probably well-served for our audience to let the Assistant County Counsel Linda Ash kind of set the table of why we're arranged like this today. So if you want to start with Linda and then we can, you know, move on to our presentation.
Okay. County Counsel.
Good morning. Yes, the matter before you today is an appeal of a notice of violation of a permit by the appellant Antara who presently held a conditional use permit. Like many hearings before your commission, this is a quasi-adjudicatory hearing, but unlike many, which normally involves the commission deciding whether to approve or deny a permit, this comes before you as a more Planning Division acting in a prosecutorial role of the notice of violation. From a due process standpoint, attorneys are not allowed from the same office, or the same attorney, excuse me, to represent both the prosecutor in a prosecutorial role and then the decision-maker in an advisory role. So therefore, Mr. Barnes, who's been working on this case with the Planning Division leading up to this hearing, he will be representing the Planning Division and their prosecutorial role. Therefore, our office has assigned me to represent your Planning Commission in an advisory role, and the Supreme Court of California has recognized that that is in compliance with due process as long as certain procedural safeguards are in place. So even though Jeff and I work in the same office, I can represent you in this advisory role. Our office took the safeguards of instituting an ethical wall which prohibited any communications substantive matters related to this case between Jeff, the Planning Division staff, and both ways, and we've been following that ethical wall, including having different supervisors and different administrative assistants to assist us in this case. And then secondly, of course, I mentioned earlier, I've not been involved in this case and have no prior experience on it, so that is my role today as your counsel. I also like to point out in this particular hearing, because it is an appeal of a notice of violation and it's coming up to you in that context, this is a de novo hearing, which means that you are to determine at this point whether or not the two violations alleged did in fact happen, and it must be supported by substantial evidence, and it is the burden of the Planning Division to establish the violations. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Onstadt.
What's the burden of proof by the county?
Just a preponderance of the evidence.
Fifty-one percent.
Yeah.
County Counsel, since you said this is a de novo hearing, what limitations does this body have as far as either adjusting the permit, conditions, and what are understanding either approval, denial, altering, or continuing?
Well, at this point, you don't have any power right now to modify the permit itself. It's just a question of whether or not Antara has committed a violation of the permit. That's the only matter before you right now, either they did or did not based on the evidence that's presented today.
So then my understanding is based on the evidence presented, we make a determination to either approve or deny the appeal, or if we don't feel have sufficient evidence to continue the matter.
Well, the issue of the continuance is up to the chair unless there's a request by the whole commission to have it continued, so that's always an option at any hearing. Getting back just quickly to your other question, it is something within the power of your commission to set a hearing later to modify terms and conditions of permits, but that's not what's before you right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's begin with the staff report.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Rodriguez and Planning Commissioners. My name is Franca Rosengren. I'm the case planner for the appeal before you today, which is PL 14-100. It's an appeal of a notice of violation, case number PV 14-0016. The appellant is Antara Energy Services. And before I get into the PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to bring your attention to the two main issues of today's hearing, and that is, one, did the appellant violate condition number 18 by exceeding the 24 truck trip limitation imposed by the permit, and did the appellant fail to obtain the state stormwater permits? So those are the very narrow issues before you today, and I want to let you know that the presentation is going to be quite lengthy. It's going to be approximately 30 to 40 minutes. The appellant has filed 20 grounds of appeal, and staff would like to go over each one of those. So starting with the first slide. The Antara facility is located at 1933 East Woolley Road in the unincorporated area of Oxnard. It's surrounded by agricultural crop production and is approximately 900 feet east of the city of Oxnard and about three-fourths of a mile northeast from the Pacific Coast Highway. The Antara CUP boundary, which is highlighted in red, is approximately two acres out of a 49-acre parcel. Its zoning designation is AE 40, that is agriculture-exclusive, 40-acre minimum parcel size, and the general plan designation is agriculture. Here is an aerial of the facility facing west. You can see East Woolley Road on the left and the ag production surrounding the facility. Here is a street view. I'm sorry, this is not the right PowerPoint. I just, I don't know if they got the, this is not the right PowerPoint.
Just keep going?
Yeah, I think they need to. Sorry.
Would this help you figure it out?
Well, no, it's fine. It's just that they have the wrong photo up.
Oh, okay, all right. They need this, let me.
Okay, well, I'm sorry for the delay. I don't know if they put up the wrong one or... Okay, I'll keep going. Anyway, so here's a street view of Antara. I'll go into the permit and enforcement history of the site in chronological order. In 1956, the special use permit was approved for the authorization of production of oil and gas at that site, and in 1998, a modification of that SUP 531, which is now called CUP 531-1, authorized an existing wastewater injection well to be used as a commercial Class II fluids disposal well, and that is the current operating permit at the facility. This 1998 modification approved two uses, the oil and gas production at the site and the new use of a commercial Class II oil-filled waste disposal facility. The Class II oil-filled waste is accepted from off-site for disposal on-site, and the waste is regulated by the Department of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources. The approved hours of operation for the facility are Monday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the truck deliveries is no more than 24 tanker-truck deliveries of Class II waste per day. Here are some photos of the site. You have the oil-filled waste disposal well, an oil well, and some Baker storage tanks. In the year 2000, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance number 4214, which no longer allowed oil-filled waste disposal facilities in the AE zone, and at this point, Antara becomes a non-conforming facility. In 2006, a notice of violation was issued by the Building and Safety Division for unauthorized removal of a farmworker dwelling unit and the installation of a commercial coach. This has since been resolved and abated. And in 2008, a violation case opened for the unpermitted testing of the conversion of an existing oil well from idle producer to injector well. This also was resolved through the permit adjustment in 2009, which authorized the conversion of an idle production well to a second-class two fluids disposal well. In 2011, a notice of violation was issued for five violations. The two violations that are in bold are similar to the violations of today's appeal, which is exceeding the allowable number of truck deliveries and operating a facility without the required state stormwater permits. This violation was not appealed. In February 2012, a compliance agreement was entered into between Antara and the County Planning Division in order to stay further enforcement actions while Antara abated the violations. This compliance agreement temporarily authorized an increase of truck trips while they pursued to abate the violations and relocate their facility to an appropriately-zoned area in the county. In late February of 2012, Antara received or approved permit adjustment for the relocation of a portion of their facility, that is, the administrative offices, truck and ancillary equipment parking, and the storage of portable tanks and bins. This was done through a permit adjustment to a master CUP that was related to a Mission Rock Road project, and that's, Mission Rock Road is an area in the county that has industrial In 2012 in September, Antara submitted an application for a conditional use permit to relocate the other part of the facility, which is a Class II oil-filled waste, to the same Mission Rock Road area. About a year and a half after the initiation of the compliance agreement, it appears that Antara abandoned the idea of relocating the facility to the Mission Rock Road area and seek to pursue an amendment to the non-consta zoning ordinance to allow these type of facilities in the AE zone. So in September of 2013, they submitted a pre-submital application to our long-range planning section of the Planning Division to evaluate this proposal to allow the Class II oil-filled waste facilities and other type of facilities like that in the AE zone. In the same month, the application for the relocation of the Class II waste disposal facility was terminated due to an activity on that project, and about a month later, the compliance agreement expired. At this point, Antara is required to operate in conformance with the conditions of approval of CUP 531. Additionally, later in that year, the Planning Director met with representatives of Antara and also reiterated the expiration of the compliance agreement and that they would need to operate in compliance with their conditions of approval. In January of 2014, the Planning Division requested Antara's truck traffic records for the months of December 2013 and January 2014. This was asked to be received, or requested to be received by February of 10, 2014. However, the appellant did not respond to this request, and in a timely manner, and in March, they did submit partial truck traffic records for February and the first half of March, and at this time, they also requested a reinstatement of the compliance agreement, which the Planning Division denied. In April 2014, the permit adjustment was granted for the site, a site plan adjustment to just clarify what was existing on-site, all the equipment, and that was approved. And in June 2014, Antara submitted a formal application for the text amendment, and this application is actually currently in process. It will go before the Board of Supervisors for consideration. It's a pre-screening process in January of 2015. So based on the six weeks of data, truck traffic data that Antara submitted in March, and compared with the fluid volume records that Antara submitted to the Department of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources, the Planning Division determined that Antara violated condition number 18 by exceeding the truck limitations for every month from November 2013 to March 2014. So based on this information, the Planning Division issued a notice of violation that is the violation that is on appeal today, that was issued on June 25th. Those violations are for exceeding the allowable number of truck deliveries of Class II waste as authorized by condition number 18, and for operating a facility which involves the processing and treatment of oil expiration materials without the state stormwater permits. In regards to condition number one, I'm sorry, in regards to violation number one, condition number 18 reads, "All trucking to and from the site shall be limited to Monday through Saturday between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. of the same day. Except for under emergency circumstances as determined by the Planning Director, no more than 24 tanker-truck deliveries per day shall be permitted." In regards to violation number two, that would come from condition number nine, and that states that "the design, maintenance, and operations of the permitted areas and facilities shall comply with all the applicable requirements of federal, state, and county authorities, and all such requirements shall by reference become conditions of this permit." The notice of violation also noticed that in order to document compliance with condition number 18, the following was required, that they maintain a truck record that lists the number of truck deliveries to the facility on each day, and that they submit a monthly report of the truck deliveries by the seventh day of each month, starting on July 7th. Between January 2014 and September 2014, the Planning Division asked Antara 10 times for a complete record of truck traffic deliveries of Class II fluids to the site. After nine months, Antara did supply us with those truck traffic records, a complete record, and we compiled everything together into one spreadsheet. This is the spreadsheet, and it shows, in red, the maximum allowed deliveries per the CUP and the actual number of Class II waste deliveries that came to the site. Based on the complete record that was submitted by Antara from November 2013 to July 2014, the Antara facility was operating in violation for 240 out of the 273 days. That's approximately 88% of the time period. So with this information, we amended the notice of violation with this information on September 23rd. The environmental review and public noticing, this appeal hearing project is exempt under SEQA because it is an enforcement action, and it's exempt per Section 15321A. The public notices are in compliance with the noticing requirements. We've sent them out to property owners within 300 feet of the project, submitted to the newspaper, notified interested parties, and posted it on our Planning Division website. So on to the grounds of appeal. I'm gonna take a drink. The appellate's grounds of appeal, number one, violation number one is factually an error based upon flawed logic and analysis and not supported legally. The violation number one was not submitted in error, was not done in error. The application form and the proposed project description submitted by the applicant in 1998, that would be referred to Exhibit 3, both state that the limit on truck trips is quote-unquote "a maximum of two trucks per hour will deliver Class II fluids for disposal during the hours of operation. The approved hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m." Secondly, the condition number 18 limits truck deliveries to no more than 24 tanker-truck deliveries per day, and thirdly, the traffic impact mitigation fee that was imposed on the project and paid by the permitty was based on 24 daily truck trips. Additionally, here is an excerpt from the appellant's 1998 proposed and approved project description. Here, Tom Marquez, who is a representative of Anodyne Energy, which later became Antara, proposes that the facility will operate from 6:00 to 6:00 p.m. and that a maximum of two trucks per hour will deliver Class II fluids for disposal during hours of operation. And below on the screen, you see an excerpt from the application form, which shows that there will be 24 trucks per day from 6:00 to 6:00 p.m. The representatives of Antara have also acknowledged and are well aware of the 24 truck trip limitation. We've, for example, the president of Antara has stated in written correspondence, that's Exhibit 7, that they're proposing a reallocation in truck traffic count, and that the reason is that their current CUP allocation is for 24 truck trips per day. As I mentioned previously, the information that Antara submitted to the Planning Division, the complete record of truck trips, shows here that they've exceeded the number of Class II waste deliveries allowed by their permit, and that they were operating in violation for 240 days out of the 273 days. The appellant has raised issues about tanker trucks versus non-tanker trucks, and in Exhibit 18, the appellant interprets the condition as such that only closed vehicles, as are tankers, carrying wastewater to arrive at the site are regulated, and that any other types of trucks, non-tankers, that deliver Class II waste are allowed in unlimited in number. The Planning Division disagrees with this interpretation, and as noted in Exhibit 19, the county explains that there are vehicles that are not regulated at the site, and those vehicles are vehicles that employees are bringing onto the site to work, deliveries of equipment, and deliveries for the oil and gas operation, as well as deliveries of non-Class II fluids. However, the county has recognized that some Class II fluids, such as drilling muds and other types of Class II fluids, can be transported in an open tank, and that means thus the open trucks have been allowed as part of the 24 tanker trucks per day. If the Planning Division was to accept or consider the appellant's view, that would mean that the CUP specifically, condition number 18, would not allow any Class II fluids that are brought in in an open truck at all to the site. But the Planning Division has provided the benefit and flexibility of considering non-tankers as an acceptable means of transporting Class II fluids to the site, but it doesn't mean that the overall limit of the trucks may be increased. The county's interpretation that open vehicles, non-tankers hauling drilling muds or other Class II materials, allow the operator to accept material for processing subject to the 24-per-day limit, and this interpretation is consistent with the original meaning and intent of condition number 18. Therefore, a ground of appeal number one is without merit. Grounds of appeal number two, violation number two is factually an error based upon flawed logic and analysis and not supported legally. I'm going to now turn it over to the Watership Protection District staff, that's Evelina Mutkowska, and she's going to talk to you about her response, their response.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez and Commissioners. My name is Evelina Mutkowska. I'm County Stormwater Program Manager. My section in Watership Protection District is responsible for implementing state requirements of the municipal stormwater permit in the county unincorporated area. One of the requirements of that permit is to ensure for the municipalities, county, and city that facility subject to industrial stormwater permit is covered under that permit. In 2000, early in 2011, during evaluation of the CUP compliance, it came to our attention that Antara facility located at 1933 East Woolley Road is subject to industrial stormwater permit. We included that requirement in the Planning Division's violation, PV 11-005. We included that requirement in the Planning Division's violation PV11-005, and as you've heard, that that requirement has not been met. Earlier this year, we verified that the Antera facility at that location has been operating without the coverage under the industrial, required industrial stormwater permit. On August 1, 2014, we received a notice of intent from Antera to obtain coverage under industrial stormwater permit, and as of August 21, Antera is listed as actively covered under the industrial stormwater permit based on the information from the State Water Resources Control Board database. However, the second component of the violation in the Planning Division's NOV PV14-0016 deals with the fact that back in late 2011, Antera offered, submitted the completed form SW1 with best management practices. There are 14 best management practices, and one of them is that, is the TC1 for stabilized entry and exit. So in this, yeah, I'm sorry, this is, this is not an updated version of that presentation. So, okay, I will just walk you through the deficiencies, and hopefully this is not going to be too confusing. So in the intended presentation, the intent of this slide was to explain you what are the requirements of the TC1 best, TC1 best management practice for the stabilized entrance, and what are the efficiencies?
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me.
Yes.
Do I understand you to say they have a permit?
So as of August 21, Antera is covered under industrial stormwater permit.
And, and there is some additional requirement you're now addressing?
The, that additional requirement requirement was included in the Planning Division NOV under the violation number two, which is dirt tracking onto the county road, the Woolley, Woolley Road.
Is this the county's requirement, or is this the state requirement?
This is, this is the state requirement. The best management practices, the industrial stormwater permit requires that the best management practices are implemented at the industrial facilities, and one of them is the stabilized entrance and exit.
Okay, well, I'm sort of confused then.
Okay.
They have a permit, but now they're in violation of their permit?
They filed for the coverage under the industrial stormwater permit. That was done in August 20, on August 21, 2014. But one of the submittals to the state requires development of a stormwater pollution prevention plan. The draft that we received has not addressed the stabilized entrance exit, and by insufficient, ineffective BMP implementation at their entrance exit, it causes the dirt tracking onto the county, county maintained road, which is Woolley Drive.
Okay.
So, so in the Planning Division, in the Planning Division, notice of violation, the violation number two, there were two components, the lack of coverage under industrial stormwater permit, and the fact that the BMP has not been implemented, and there is a, there's a dirt tracking onto the county road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. So all these alleged, alleged violations that you're referring to as far as tracking debris, et cetera, onto the roadway, all occurred prior to the time that they received the application you're talking about?
Correct. The first public complaint that we received was in, back in 2011. There was an effort taken to address that issue, and that back in 2000, in March 2014, we received another public complaint, which under our municipal stormwater permit, we are required to respond, and we, we evaluated the photos taken at the time of the inspection and the deficiencies described in the entrance exit, and determined that the BMP is not effectively implemented at the Antera facility, at that location. So the TC1 BMP, it's the CASBA BMP fact sheet describing what's required under that BMP, requires that the size of the aggregate is between 3 and 6 inches, and based on our detailed inspection, focusing on the exit entrance conducted with the Antera representatives on July 22, 2014, we determined that the aggregate size is not bigger than 1 and 1/2 inch. So it's significantly smaller than it's supposed to be. Then the depth of the aggregates is required to be at 12 inches, and it's, right now at the Antera facility, it does not exceed 2 inches. The fabric, filter fabric at the base of the aggregates is required a sediment barrier, and currently at the Antera facility, there aren't, there is no filter fabric installed at the base of the aggregates. The BMP requires large aggregates and gives an option for shaker plates on the top of that aggregate, and as of July 22, there are no large aggregates, and the shaker plates are placed directly on the dirt. The vehicles leaving the site must cross stabilized entrance to clean the tires before they get onto the road, and then the, currently at the Antera facility, because the improvements that were done are only partially installed, not to the full length, width of the entrance, it is not, it is not effective and give opportunity for the vehicles to, to pass by. And then the BMP requires that the stabilized entrance is up to the paved surface, so once the tires are cleaned, they are not being, they're not being contaminated by the dirt again, and then that, that is not the case at the Antera facility. The small aggregates are thinly deposited, and they are compromised by the heavy traffic and exposing dirt. And this little bit of the, the technical explanation, the, the reason for it is to, to explain that the currently entrance and exit at the Antera facility is not, is not effective for cleaning the tires and making sure that there's no dirt tracking onto the county maintained road. That, that was all at the, at this point.
Okay, staff, want to continue with presentation?
Grounds of appeal number three, each of the alleged violations are barred by the doctrine of latches. The doctrine of latches is a legal doctrine that a legal right or claim will not be enforced or allowed if a long delay in asserting the right or claim has prejudiced the adverse party. The appellate has not stated any facts or provided an explanation for this grounds of appeal, and therefore it is without merit. Okay. Looks like there's some technical difficulties, so just hold on. They just stopped just the PowerPoint. I think they're trying to figure something out.
Commissioner Westner?
Staff thinks probably be appropriate for us to take a couple minute break while they fix their technical errors. Never mind, Mr. Chair.
I apologize for that confusion. So hopefully we're on track now. Okay. Grounds of appeal number four, each of the alleged violations are barred by the doctrine of equitable estoppel. These are the elements of equitable estoppel. I'll let you read those if you want. And the most important thing about equitable estoppel is that the doctrine of equitable estoppel may not be applied against a governmental agency if the injustice would result from a failure to uphold an estoppel is of sufficient dimension to justify any effect upon public interest or policy which would result from the raising of an estoppel. Again, the appellate has not stated any facts or provided any explanation for this grounds of appeal, and therefore we believe it's without merit. The last two grounds of appeal, if you have questions regarding those, they are legal terms, and our county council is here to answer those questions. Grounds of appeal number five, each of the alleged violations improperly seek to impose limitations not specified in the CUP. The Planning Division has not imposed limitations on the appellate. As mentioned earlier, violation number one is condition number 18. It clearly specifies that there's no more than 24 tanker truck deliveries of Class II waste allowed, allowed per day, that's all. And staff has further clarified to Antera that each single vehicle that hauls Class II waste to the site constitutes a tanker truck. And we've also gone into such detail that we've said, okay, a truck, a tractor that's hauling two trailers counts as a single vehicle for one trip. In regards to violation number two, the requirement for Antera facility to be covered under the NPDS Stormwater General Industrial Permit derives from condition number nine, which requires that the Antera facility be in compliance with all applicable federal, state, and county regulations, and that includes the state's Stormwater General Industrial Permit. And therefore, we believe it's without merit. Appeal number six, each of the alleged violations are based upon disparate treatment designed to harass and intimidate the appellate. The appellate, or I should say, the applicant in 1998, the Anodyne facility, which is now Antera, they provided the Planning Division a proposed project description, which was the hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, for the new Class II fluids waste disposal facility with a limit of 24 tanker trucks per day. We analyzed that proposed project, and the Planning Division, Planning Director approved that project. Those are the conditions that are being imposed on the operator today. Those are the same conditions, it's what they asked for, and that's what's in the permit. The terms and conditions apply only to the Antera facility, and are not relevant to any other permitted facility. And the notice of violation was issued as a result of Antera not being in compliance with their conditions of approval. Therefore, we believe number six is without merit. Grounds of appeal number seven, each of the alleged violations are violations of understandings and agreements reached within the county. The only applicable understandings and agreements are the conditions of approval, and the non coastal zoning ordinance, and the requirements of federal, state, and local regulations, and therefore we believe this appeal is, appeal number seven is without merit. Grounds of appeal number eight, each of the alleged violations do not constitute violations of the CUP. As explained earlier in our responses to numbers one through six, the alleged violations are violations of the conditions of approval, and we believe that number eight is without merit. Grounds of appeal number nine, each of the alleged violations are contrary to the prior positions of the county, and constitute therefore improper enforcement of action at law. Staff assumes that the appellate is referring to a compliance agreement that was entered into in 2012, and in order to abate the violations in the 2011 notice of violation. This agreement is not a permit, it's not a permit modification, but it's a temporary opportunity for a violator, for Antera in this case, to resolve their issues, and in a timely manner. The reason, one of the, two of the reasons why we entered into this compliance agreement was because Antera expressed the intent to move a significant portion of their facility to an appropriately zoned area in the county, and within a specific time limit, which would be prior to the expiration of the compliance agreement. This was a temporary agreement. The compliance agreement expired, and Antera abandoned the idea to relocate the facility. Antera was and is required to limit truck traffic in accordance with the condition number 18. Again, that is no more than 24 tanker truck deliveries per operational day. So the positions expressed by staff and the temporary agreements made between the county, they don't alter or amend the conditions of approval. Grounds of appeal number 10, each of the alleged violations are designed to solely or in part extract funds from appellate by forcing appellate to pay the county staff in an improper manner. In this regard, appellate reserves all rights relative to the concurrently filed reimbursement agreement, including with respect to charges issued, overcharges, improper billing, and all other rights associated therewith. The appellate has not improperly been billed by the county. The costs associated with the enforcement actions and the costs associated with this appeal are regulated and adopted by the Board of Supervisors through the non coastal zoning ordinance and through our adopted fee schedule. The county, through the non coastal zoning ordinance, county may impose fees and charges on persons to cover costs incurred for enforcement actions. And the Board of Supervisors has adopted the Planning Division fee schedule, which includes a deposit for an appeal application, and we can bill for staff time spent on preparing the appeal hearing documents, and if the appeal is upheld, all fees are paid by the appellate will be refunded, and if appeal is denied, the appellate will be required to pay the cost of staff time expended in excess of the $1,000 deposit. Again, this has been adopted by the Board of Supervisors. Therefore, we believe that grounds of appeal number 10 is without merit. Grounds of appeal number 11, each of the alleged violations are designed to intimidate appellate with respect to the previously filed zone text amendment. This notice of violation was issued in response to the violations that Antera committed, and is unrelated to the text zoning text amendment that they have submitted to the Planning Division. Grounds of appeal number 11 is without merit. Appellants' grounds of appeal number 12, each of the alleged violations seek to enforce a zoning limitation illegally and improperly purportedly imposed upon appellate without notice or due process. Staff assumes that the appellate is referring to the non coastal zoning ordinance amendment adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2000, which resulted in the nonconforming status of the Antera facility. These amendments were adopted in a legally noticed public hearing before the Board of Supervisors, and although they are considered a nonconforming facility, they are allowed to continue their operation until the permit expires, which is in 2018. Therefore, grounds of appeal number 12 is without merit. The appellate's grounds of appeal number 13, each of the alleged violations are the result of disparate treatment by the county as to like situated or similarly situated companies as appellate. Again, I'm going to reiterate this, the proposed project was brought before the Planning Division. We analyzed that proposed project and approved that proposed project based on what they wanted. The terms and conditions of the approval, they govern the uses at the Antera facility. The permit is unique to the Antera facility. Each conditionally permitted facility is treated the same. They must operate in accordance with their conditions. So therefore, grounds of appeal number 13 is without merit. Grounds of appeal number 14, each of the alleged violations are based upon illegal and impermissible, impermissible demands by the county, not supported by law or fact, and thereby issued as punishment for appellate's failure to comply with the illegal and or impermissible demands of the county. This grounds, ground of appeal doesn't define or identify what illegal and impermissible demands made by the county, thus no response is possible. Therefore, we believe this appeal number 14 is without merit. Therefore, we believe this appeal number 14 is without merit. Grounds of appeal number 15. Each of the alleged violations predicated unknowingly or intentionally false and misleading claimed facts. This ground of appeal does not identify intentionally false and misleading claimed facts cited by the county. We, thus, no specific response is possible, and therefore, we believe it's without merit. Grounds of appeal number 16. Each of the alleged violation fails to state facts sufficient to support any allegation or finding of violation. And grounds of appeal number 17. Each of the alleged violations fail to specify with particularity the facts or basis of the alleged violation. I've explained it earlier in our staff's responses to appeal number one. I'm going to reiterate it again. The truck traffic record provided by the appellant documents violation number one. They provided us with the complete record of truck traffic trips. It showed that they were in violation 240 out of the 273 days. And as Evelina Mukowska explained, they are in violation with the state stormwater permits by not obtaining the appropriate permits or implementing them. Therefore, grounds of appeal number 16 and 17 are without merit. Grounds of appeal number 18. Each of the alleged violations are based upon the improper, without notice, and unconstitutional alleged termination of the pre-existing compliance agreement and associated therewith, and in addition thereto, the improper disparate treatment and illegal unwillingness of staff to extend the pre-existing compliance agreement in whole or in part or without improper imposition of conditions economic and otherwise. The county is under no obligation to enter into a compliance agreement. A compliance agreement is a temporary arrangement, and Antera's compliance agreement expired on October 30, 2013. Therefore, it's null and void. The ground of appeal number 18 is without merit. Grounds of appeal number 19. Appellant reserves the right to further augment these grounds of appeal, and the appeal shall not be limited to the foregoing specified grounds, but shall further include all legal, factual, and constitutional rights of appeal. The appellant may augment the information provided to your commission. Grounds of appeal number 20. By filing the appeal, appellant does not concede jurisdiction to the administrative process and reserves all rights, claims, and defenses associated therewith. The grounds of appeal does not relate to the compliance with conditional use permit CUP 531 and the notice of violation. Recommended Actions. The appellant's recommended actions, there are four of them. I'll read each one. Number one, that the notice of violation in each of them be dismissed with prejudice. Number two, that all fees imposed by the county be refunded with interest. That appellant be awarded its attorney's fees and costs associated with this proceeding, and for such further and additional relief as legally permissible, and all rights associated therewith are reserved. Staff's response to these recommended actions by the appellant are that your commission lacks the legal authority to grant requests for an award of its attorney's fees and costs associated with this appeal. The Planning Division and the appellant bear their own legal costs associated with this appeal. With respect to awarding fees and costs, your commission's sole authority is to determine what portion of the Planning Division appeal fees should be refunded to the appellant in the event the appeal is granted in part. Should your commission uphold the notice of violation, the Planning Division intends to issue a notice of impending civil administrative penalties. And if the Antera facility continues to operate in noncompliance with their conditions of approval, this may result in the issuance of a notice of permit revocation. So as I mentioned at the very beginning, before I even started the PowerPoint presentation, the very narrow issues before you are whether or not did the appellant violate condition number 18 by exceeding the 24 tanker truck trip deliveries of Class II fluids per day as established in their permit? And did they fail to obtain the required state water permits and implement those permits as what Evelina Mukowska presented this afternoon? Staff's recommended actions are in the staff report, and we would like you to deny the appeal case number PL14, find that this enforcement matter is categorically exempt, find that the notice of violation was issued in accordance with the non-custodial zoning ordinance, uphold the violations described in the notice of violation, and designate the Planning Director as the custodian of the documents, of the records of today. So that concludes staff's presentation. I am, staff's available to answer any questions. Evelina Mukowska is available, as well as Mr. Baca and Ms. Prilhar. I believe Mr. Baca has some comments to make.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I just want to have sort of a slight synopsis for clarity. The 1998 Permit Modification Action starts with an oil facility that had operated since 1956 under a permit granted at that time. And so the site was an oil-producing part of an oil field. And ultimately, there were six wells drilled on that site. So up until 1998, there had been trucking at the site, but only in terms of fluids, only departures of fluids. The site had their own injection well, and so the only thing that departed and the only trucking involved with the site may have been bringing in equipment or drilling rigs. But in terms of transport of fluids, it was limited to the oil that they produced, and they transported it to market since the site is not connected to any kind of an oil pipeline. So that trucking was unregulated and unlimited in the 1956 permit, and it continues to be unregulated and not subject to any particular limit, their ability to truck the oil that they produce from their producing well from the site. However, the 1998 modification of the permit brings in a whole new element. That is, now fluid is being delivered to the site from off-site places. So when you see references to truck deliveries, that is specifically and only related to the Class II Waste Disposal Facility that was allowed under the terms of condition number one of the modified SUP 531, what is now known as CUP 531-1. So the only deliveries we're talking about, when you talk about the condition of approval 18, it's strictly dealing with the delivery of Class II waste from off-site sources because there never was any deliveries of fluids prior to that time. I'd like to point out just some simple facts, and these are from materials that are in your staff report and materials, that Antera is perfectly aware of the limitations of their permit and what it means. And I would direct your attention to a January 31, 2014 letter. This is part of Exhibit 14, and this letter is signed by Sally Coleman, President of Antera Energy. And it says, "During discussions with you and your staff, I have come to understand that the existing numeric limitations on truck traffic were not based on a traffic analysis but are arbitrary and a result of the original owner telling the county that this was all that was needed." Well, she, right there, recognizes what the original owner and the original operator, Tom Marquez, submitted as part of the application to the county. And then she asks, "Therefore, I respect the request that you temporarily confirm authorization of an increase in Antera's truck traffic allocation while Santa Clara wastewater makes necessary improvements." At that time, Santa Clara wastewater was having some difficulty. Another letter from Ms. Coleman is even clearer. The letter is dated March 14, 2014. It is part of Exhibit 11. It says, "Request to reinstate compliance agreement. The purpose of this letter is to request temporary relief from the numeric truck traffic limitation established in the current conditional use permit, number 531." And then the letter goes on and says, "Antera is proceeding in the final steps of permitting construction of two new treatment disposal facilities in Kern County. These facilities will provide our customers with viable alternative disposal options. Final permitting and completion of these sites is progressing nicely. We believe that bringing these facilities online will help offset the pressure on the Woolly Road plant for our customers." And then they further talked about another alternative. "Antera is working with commercial real estate agent Steve Bunger to relocate the Mission Rock Road facility to Oxnard. The goal is to move the facility where we may have a sewer connection and obtain an industrial wastewater discharge permit so that we may discharge to the wastewater collection system if needed." So, and further, "Our request is to reestablish the prior compliance agreement for the time it takes to accomplish the proposed Zone Text Amendment and CUP modification. Please allow me to emphasize that the current Antera ownership and management is not who you were dealing with before. As your staff is aware, our company's new ownership and management were quite shocked by what occurred previously, and we understand your frustration over what has transpired to this point. Please know that you have our sincerest apologies." Condition number one, it specifically allows Class II waste deliveries to the site. Condition number 18 limits deliveries to 24 tanker trucks per day. That's consistent with everything that was done at the public hearing in 1998 disclosed to the public. That's consistent with what was analyzed for sequo purposes as part of that project, and it's consistent with the operator's understanding at that time when they paid the check for 24 ADTs. Remember that there was an existing oil facility, and the modification only dealt with the change in that facility. There weren't any additional conditions placed upon the trucking of oil from the site. There were no conditions to do that in the original permit. The only change was to allow them to now take Class II waste deliveries. And so they paid a transportation fee based upon the change in conditions at that time, which was 24 trucks to the site per day. My last point is just remember that the ongoing oil and gas operation involves trucking fluids from the site. There's no trucking to the site. The only trucking to the site is the Class II waste delivery facility. With that, I think, oh, and one last point, just although it's in the record, and I just want to point it out. Antera themselves acknowledges that on nine days during the period of record, they exceeded the 24 per day of what they call tankers. So they've already admitted in their documentation, nine days in which they're in violation just of the tanker limit, if you believe them in their definition. There's already nine days of violation acknowledged by them in the record from information they provide us. So even if you accepted their interpretation, they were in violation for nine days and with no explanation. When I was told that they took 63 trucks on one day, tanker trucks, mind you, on one day in February, I sent an email to Sally Coleman and asked her, "Under what authority did you do that?" I'm still awaiting an answer. So with that, staff's available for any of your questions, and we're done.
Thank you. I think we're going to have disclosures at this time. Commissioner Maggie.
No disclosures.
Let me sure do this.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Westman.
No disclosures, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Onst.
Yes, I have disclosures. I was contacted by Mr. Goldenring on two occasions by telephone prior to this hearing. The conversations did not relate to the merits of any proceeding here today. He was concerned about what we discussed last weekend, a briefing schedule, and the ability to get the information in a timely manner and let everyone have the opportunity to understand it. But there were no determinations and no discussions regarding the merits of the action. We did not discuss the Antera proceeding at all other than the ability to brief it.
I'm from there with the site. I was born in this county, West County. I travel that road relatively often, probably as recently as this week. That's my only disclosure.
Yes, Commissioner Dukas.
I have questions of staff.
Commissioner Dukas, question of staff? Can I have somebody?
When both of you were making your presentation to us, you stopped at some pictures and said, "This is not the updated report." Do you have the updated report now?
Yes.
And is there something in those pictures that you wanted to show us?
It was just an updated picture of the front of the facility.
Does it change anything in what you?
No, it does not. But the...
Does it change it in stormwater?
Evelina may want to show the first slide, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Dukas, the confusion, I determine, resulted from a practice session that Ms. Rosengren took in this room of her presentation. And unfortunately, she named the final PowerPoint with the same name in the computer file, and there was some confusion behind the glass up there as to which one was the final version.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's anything of substance that we need to...
This is more of a presentation. The purpose of this slide was to compare what the BMP requires and compare it to the current condition of the Antera facility exit entrance. And I walked through this comparison in my presentation.
Okay, then, thank you.
The staff report says Ventura County Watershed Protection District determined that Antera was operating a facility for processing and treatment of oil materials without a permit. And yet, the next paragraph, Watershed Protection District staff have been working closely with the appellant, and on August 21, 2014, Antera's facility in Oxnard has been listed on the State Water Board website as covered under an active industrial stormwater permit. Now, there is a permit. The complaint was, they didn't have one. What I'm being told is that they're in violation of some requirement by the state. Is that, is there an enforcement proceeding against them, or does that come through this
So under our municipal stormwater permit, the county is responsible for addressing complaints regarding the non-stormwater discharges onto county stormwater system. Back in 2011, we received a complaint about the dirt being tracked onto the county road. And then back in March 2013, we received another complaint. Both complaints were addressed. The first time, Antera made an effort to make improvements to the entrance and exit, and also committed to street sweeping to ensure that there is no dirt being tracked onto the county road. And based on the March 2014 inspection, we noted that improvements were insufficient since we received another complaint. And so, and a part of the state, so we've got two requirements here. Under the state industrial stormwater permit, the industrial facility operator should not be discharging non-stormwater discharge onto the waterways and county municipal storm drain system. But also, under our municipal stormwater permit, we are to prohibit any non-stormwater discharge onto our facilities.
I understand what you're saying. Is there an enforcement proceeding to revoke the permit? Is there something pending? Because what I see in staff report is there is a permit, and there's a problem with it. I don't know if Antera's acknowledged or admitted they're in violation, but there is a permit. I may be overly technical here, but it's one of the bases for appeal.
So as a part of the permit application to the state, I mentioned Antera submitted the notice of intent to get coverage under permit. State acknowledged the receipt of the NOI notice of intent and the fee that comes with that. And then the second portion of it is preparation of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And in this plan, industrial facility operators shall describe how they're going to implement best management practices to meet the permit requirements. And one of this BMP best management practices is to have a stabilized entrance exit to prevent any... to prevent any non-stormwater discharge from the facility.
And, and to be clear, that's a violation of the permit as well.
Well, is it or isn't it? Is there?
Of the, of the conditional use permit.
Well, the industrial stormwater permit is administered by regional, regional water board, so it would be to their determination to, to, you know, enforce under industrial stormwater permit. And under our municipal stormwater permit, we do have stormwater ordinance and which prohibits the non-stormwater discharge onto county facilities.
I understand what you're saying. But what you've told me is you have not, nor has the permit been invalidated.
Well, the...
I understand, I have your answer, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that, it is in violation of Condition 9 of the CUP.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, speaker cards. I have Sally Coleman as the first card. Unless, Mr. Goldenring, you have a...
No, I just want to let you know the lay of our land so that you have it in mind. Sally Coleman, the president, will speak first, and then I'll...
Why don't you, why don't you speak up, step up to the mic and introduce yourself?
Sure. I, I just wanted to give you the lay of the land for your sequencing, and on a morning break, Sally Coleman's going to speak first, probably 10, 12 minutes, and then I'm going to speak for much longer. So, however you want the morning to unfold, I wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay, thank you. Sally Coleman.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Sally Coleman, and I am the president of Antera. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. It's really important to me that you have a little understanding of my background. I've only been with Antera for 15 months, and before that, I spent 25 years in public sector here in this county. In my last job, I was the director of operations for Ventura Regional Sanitation District, and I did that for seven years. And before that, I was a director, a deputy director of Watershed Protection District, where I ran the water quality and environmental programs under Jeff Pratt, including the countywide stormwater quality management program. Before that, I was a technical services manager for the city of Oxnard for eight years, where I ran their pre-treatment programs, which regulate the industrial discharges from the commercial industrial segments, as well as the countywide, the stormwater program for the city. Before that, I was an inspector for both the city of Simi Valley and Carpinteria Sanitary District. I really understand the importance of compliance, permits, rules, and regulations. I've dedicated my whole professional career to understanding the relationships between regulators and stakeholders. I understand the importance of interpreting rules and regulations and sticking to my word when I, when I made an interpretation of a rule. I didn't vacillate, and I didn't waver. I understood that the businesses had to make decisions based on my decisions, and it was really important to me that I kept my word. During this presentation, I'm going to make a couple different references to some documents, and as Mr. Goldenring, counsel for our corporation, said, he's going to speak after me, and he will give you all those exhibits. I believe that he's prepared binders for you that contain the exhibits that I'm referring to.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
You identify yourself as president of Antera?
Yes.
How long have you served in that capacity?
I became president of Antera in December of 2013, so about 10 months.
Thank you.
As staff stated to you, the issue surrounding the truck traffic issue with Antera is not new. In 2011, Antera provided the county with a legal opinion of the interpretation of Condition 18 and our conditional use permit. And at that timeframe, Antera also had conversations with county staff about moving some portion of our Woolley Road operation over to Mission Rock Road in Santa Paula. At that time, Antera and the county reached an agreement, and we had agreed upon interpretation of Condition 18 regarding the truck traffic limitation and our conditional use permit. This was done numerous times, both verbally and in writing, and Mr. Goldenring will go into great detail on that matter when he gives you his presentation. The county clearly recognized the distinction between tanker and non-tanker trucks. The condition agreement, or, I'm sorry, the compliance agreement that staff spoke about previously was established to address the other issues that Antera had to resolve. You heard there were things regarding the office trailer, and there was a fire tank and a few other things. The compliance agreement was surrounding that, and it was established, and it was extended one year beyond the initial implementation date so that Antera could address those other issues. And as Mr. Baca said, I did send some letters to the county because early on, I didn't have access to all the history that had surrounded Antera. I was new to the company. I didn't have a lot of the historical context of different things that had transpired previously, and staff had directed me to send some of those letters asking for various things. I was following their lead. They had given me guidance on different opportunities of things that I should pursue to try and get some relief regarding truck traffic, and I followed their lead based on the information that I had at the time. Based on the binding agreement that I thought we had in place regarding the interpretation of the language of Condition 18 and our conditional use permit, Antera spent almost $2 million on capital improvement projects at the Woolley Road facility. We also increased our staffing levels, and we spent a lot of money training the additional staff that we brought in to accommodate the additional truck traffic that we thought was an agreed-upon arrangement with the county of Ventura. It's important to note that our facility provides a very vital and essential service to this industry in this county. And staff might tell you that there are other disposal places to go, but there are simply not enough oilfield waste disposal facilities to accommodate the existing waste material that's being generated these days. Our services are highly valued because our clients like the fact that Antera strives to find the most highest, best, and beneficial reuse of the waste materials that we recover. Our clients depend on the availability of our service, and they plan their budgets and their schedules around the availability of our services. And to give you a sense of the timeline here, like I said, I just became president of Antera in December of 2013. And at that point in time, it was really important for me to make decisions regarding the priority of some of the projects that we had in play. We have a lot of money going out right now. Like I said, we just spent $2 million at the Woolley Road facility, and we are building two facilities at Kern, and they are phenomenally expensive facilities to build. So, it was really important for me to try and establish the priorities of the company moving forward. There's only so much money to go around, and I thought about it, and I realized that to relocate portions of the Woolley Road operation over to Mission Rock Road would be another very expensive activity, and it would be a lengthy process for the permitting. So, I thought it made the most sense to me to pursue the Zone Text Amendment first to just see if we could get that before we expended any more money, since we were already putting the money into the Kern facilities. And as soon as I shared that information with Mr. Baca, and I told him that we were going to pursue the Zone Text Amendment rather than the relocation to Woolley Road, or to Mission Rock Road, everything changed for Antera. And staff might tell you that we were going to vacate Woolley Road and move over to Mission Rock Road, but that's not true. There was only some small portion of the operation that was ever even being considered for relocation. But interestingly enough, when I told Mr. Baca that we were going to pursue the Zone Text Amendment rather than the relocation over to Woolley Road, that's when all of a sudden, staff started changing their mind on the previous interpretation of Condition 18. And even though I am designated as the Antera permitting contact for the, with the county, there was no dialogue with me, no communication, either verbally or in writing, about why all of a sudden they were changing their mind about the interpretation of Condition 18, when that interpretation had been enforced for two years. It's not fair for county planning to simply change their mind. And a perfect example of this is a meeting that I had with Ms. Prilhart and Mr. Baca on December 20th. This was a couple weeks after I became president, and we were discussing the various options that were available to Antera, and that included the continuation permit, the Zone Text Amendment, and the relocation to the Woolley Road, or to the Mission Rock Road site. And at that time, we were discussing what constituted a permanent structure. And in this particular conversation, Ms. Prilhart told me that if a certain term is not defined in our permit, and it's not defined in a county planning ordinance, that we refer to Webster's Dictionary for the definition. Well, I thought, hmm, I wonder how Webster's Dictionary defines tanker. So, I went to Webster's Dictionary, and Webster's Dictionary defines tanker as a vessel that is designed to carry liquid, not solid, not gas. And that definition is consistent with the prior agreement and binding proposal that we had with the county surrounding Condition 18. And it's not okay, once again, for county staff to just simply change their minds. We have spent, and we continue to spend, a tremendous amount of money on our operations. We employ about 50 people who depend on us for their jobs. We have clients, and our clients are the oil companies here in Ventura County that are contributing more than $120 million in tax revenue to this county every year. They depend on our services and the availability of our services, and it's not okay to just simply change your mind about the interpretation of regulations. The issues surrounding the stormwater violation are absolutely worse. Beginning in 2011 and continuing into 2012, Antera and its consultant worked with the County Watershed Protection District on the interpretation of stormwater requirements needed for the site. Because of a document that was signed by Mr. Yugal Law in February of 2012, we believed that we were in compliance with the stormwater requirements. In March 14, 2014, Mr. Chris Stevens of Ventura Regional Sanitation District, under contract to Watershed Protection District, responded to a complaint of sediment being tracked from the Woolley Road facility, from Antera out onto the Woolley Road facility. Mr. Stevens went to the site, he conducted an inspection, he took seven photos of the site, and he concluded that the sediment was not being tracked onto Woolley Road from the Antera facility, but it was in fact being transported to Woolley Road from the adjacent farm fields. He communicated that to me verbally, and he gave me a written report that stated, "No violations. The sediment had come from the adjacent farm fields." So, we continued to do business, thinking everything was fine. We had no communication with Watershed Protection District from March until the end of June, when all of a sudden, out of the blue randomly, once again, the county changed their mind. They sent us a notice of violation and called that violation, or that inspection in March, all of a sudden was now a violation. And that is not fair, and it's not appropriate. So, I immediately called Ms. Mukoska, and I told her I had a written copy of that inspection report and those seven photos that clearly showed there was no violation on that day. And Ms. Mukoska said that she had a problem with our driveway, and I told her that we had tried to pave our driveway back in January. I, like I said, I became president in December. There were changes that I wanted to make to the facility, having a stormwater background. I wanted to make improvements to that site. I, I mean, we have 16 rumble plates, and yet, maybe she doesn't like our gravel size, but we have a boatload of gravel out there. But I thought, it would be a lot better to pave that driveway. So, we hired an engineering firm, and we got a drawing designed. We hired a barricade company, came up with a traffic control plan to get the permit. We actually paid for and obtained an encroachment permit from county transportation to pave that driveway, only to be told by county planning, we couldn't pave the driveway. But we wanted to, we tried to. So, when I relayed that to Ms. Mukoska, she said, "Oh, and by the way, you're subject to the state's general industrial permit." And I said, "No, we're not." Again, remember, I ran the countywide stormwater program. I know something about stormwater regulations, and there's a provision in the state general industrial permit that specifically states, let me see if I can find it real quick, types of discharge not covered by this permit. Mining and oil and gas facilities that have not released stormwater resulting in a discharge are not required to seek coverage. Our site is completely bermed. We have no stormwater runoff. Our runoff is completely fully contained at that site. Yet, Ms. Mukoska believed that we should seek coverage. And again, I thought, okay, I like stormwater, I care about stormwater. If that helps you feel better about things, I'll do a SWIP, and we'll get coverage. Not that I agreed with her interpretation by any means, but I thought, that's an easy one, I can do that. So, we did do that, and that's why we do have coverage under that permit, but I do completely disagree with her interpretation of that. So then, over the last few days, now we get another letter from Ms. Prilhart saying, "Oh, by the way, that letter that Mr. Yugal Law wrote back in February 12, or February 2012 is also a mistake, and now we have a problem with that." But again, it's not fair for county staff to keep changing their mind back and forth. We are trying to run a business, and it is a highly regulated business. We have inspectors in and out of our facility all of the time, and we have a very good relationship with our other regulators, and it's not simply fair to our employees or to our clients for people to keep changing their mind. It's very important that we receive clear and consistent interpretation of rules and So, what I'm asking for you today is to rescind the notice of violation and to direct staff to honor their prior interpretation of the language surrounding Condition 18 and our conditional use permit. And it's really important to me that you take that to heart, because if this doesn't happen, I'm wondering, who's going to stand beside me when I tell the owners of our company that we just blew $2 million because I thought we had an agreement with the county regarding truck traffic? Or that I have to lay off 10 to 15 people now because the county's changed their mind, and we can no longer interpret Condition 18 the way we thought we could before, and now we have restrictions? And who's going to help me tell our clients that, "Oh, you have to substantially increase your budget for waste disposal, and our availability for services is greatly restricted because the county changed their mind?" And I'm wondering, who's going to tell the community that the carbon footprint associated with waste disposal of oilfield materials has increased substantially, because rather than having a local waste disposal site, they now have to drive 150 miles to Kern County and back each way? I don't think that's appropriate, and I ask you to please consider rescinding the notice of violation and directing staff to honor their prior agreement as to the interpretation of Condition 18. Thank you.
Have a question. Questions of Speaker? Commissioner Onst.
I'd like to get back to the discharge permit again. Am I correct in saying you have a permit?
We have a permit.
Is there an enforcement proceeding or anything pending to withdraw?
Absolutely not.
Is it your position that a permit was never really required?
Yes.
And if, and let me finish. And if there was some proceeding in that regard, that would be a defense to even having the permit in the first place?
I believe...
In other words, it's not required?
I believe it's not required, but I also believe that that was an easy one to just go and obtain. I don't have a problem with it. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to fight every single battle. And again, I don't believe we're subject to it, but we got one.
You indicated that you were prepared to change the entrance, and I'm sorry, that still isn't up there. Could we put that back up?
You can see...
I assume that's the disputed area.
Yes, it is.
Could we put that back up on the screen? I'm not sure.
And I can tell you something else, too. We were told that we were subject to the same provision that all oil companies in this county are subject to, and we drove around other oilfield, oil-producing sites just to see who all had a paved or approved driveway. Excuse me, no one did, not one of them that we saw. So, they're focusing on Antera, and they're not applying that uniformly to other oil companies.
I understand what you're saying. I wanted to see the entrance, it's, it's the dispute.
If you can show the one that has the split spring, that shows both of them with the shake racks.
What was the rationale for denying the paving of that driveway, ma'am?
The, what we've been told is because they made us a non-conforming use back in 2000 that we can't change anything at the site.
I understand what you're, so because it was in fact a non-conforming use, they couldn't change the permit?
We couldn't change anything.
Okay.
But you can see...
Would you describe this to me?
Yeah, you can see, we have taken extreme measures, much more so than a lot of other companies, all kinds of different companies. We have 16 shake racks there in a row, and then we have all that...
Excuse me, ma'am, what's a shake rack?
They're, they're the metal racks that you can see, the blue plates on the ground at the end of the gravel. What they are is they're grooved metal plates that have deep, deep grooves in them, so that when the trucks that have any dirt that might be, because we can't pave the facility either, so the back of our facility is dirt that we have to spray down to keep the dust under control. So, our trucks sometimes have a little bit of sediment on them, so as they roll very slowly through those shake racks, the dirt is caught in those deep grooves, and then if there's anything residual, it's going to be caught in that gravel before it hits Woolley Road.
Okay.
And I have a traffic spotter that is fully dedicated to standing at that gate, getting trucks in and out of our site, and all he does all day long in between trucks come in there is clean those grooves on that shake rack. So, those grooves are always clean and always working properly.
I didn't really understa, you said the, the surface area is bermed. It's obviously not bermed coming out onto this public street.
All, all around the backside of the facility, you can see it's fully contained. You can't really... You can't really tell so much in these photos, but there are berms that control the whole facility. All the operation is in the back part of the facility.
But, okay, so what you're telling me is, because it was a non-conforming use, the county took the position it couldn't modify the-
Correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Before I'm through, could you give us an overview of wastewater disposal in this county?
Can I give you an overview?
How many operators are there?
Oh, I'm sorry, when you say wastewater, are you talking about this?
I'm talking about facilities like this.
There are 442 active injection disposal wells here in this county right now. We're the only commercial disposal injection facility, but there are somewhere in the neighborhood of 442 active injection wells here in this county, and many of them that are privately owned and operated are taking in substantially more fluid each day than we are.
Okay. So these would be injection wells operated by oil companies on leases?
Yes.
And they're permitted by Dogger, I see?
Yes, we all are.
So you're the only commercial facility?
Yes.
And if you closed, what would happen to the traffic? Where would they have to go?
They'd go to Kern County. That's why we're building two facilities out there. There's a lot, there's substantially more oil activity in Kern County. Ventura County's the third highest producer in the county, but it's substantially less. Kern County is just heads and shoulders above everybody, then LA, and then Ventura County.
I understand you're saying a great many wastewater disposal wells exist. What's the reason for the increased activity at your facility?
Well, there's an oil boom going on. And so there are a lot of smaller companies that don't have their own injection disposal wells, and they need our services.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question, just to clarify. Where is the person that, standing that physically took these pictures?
It looks like one person was standing probably on the fog line of Woolley Road. You see that white line that runs down the edge of Woolley Road where the van is? They're probably standing right at that point, looking towards the Antara facility in the first facility on the photo on the left.
Looking westbound?
Well, the photo on the left, I'd say they're probably standing on that fog line, looking towards back into the Antara facility.
Looking into the facility.
Yes. And then, in the photo on the right, they're standing alongside Woolley Road to the, what would that be, east, I guess, along the farm field, looking towards the city of Oxnard.
Toward the intersection of Woolley and Rose.
And Rose, mhm, yep.
Thank you.
Mhm. Thank you.
Next speaker is, we're going to take a brief break for our next speaker. Convene 20 minutes of the hour, 10:40. He's right here. He's present.
I'm Peter Goldenring, I'm counsel for Antara. So that you know, as my children would tell you, I'm completely technologically incapable. This is Craig Bates from Teligenics, so he's going to help me with certain documents and portions of them that I, that are in our binder, but I want to highlight in the conversation, and so I'm asking him to stand here with me. The, the comment that struck me in the presentation by staff was that, in connection with the permit and what is Condition 18, and we'll talk about that in a moment, they want you to look at what they describe as the original intent and language. Well, the truth is, you look at the language, you can't divine the intent. You look at the language, like a statute or anything else, that's what you start with, that's the legal requirement. But we're willing to also talk about intent around it. Staff will tell you, I trust, that whatever anybody may ask for, or whatever anybody may provide by way of information around a permit, staff writes the permits, staff enforces permits, and staff interprets permits. That's why, under the ordinance, and I'll talk about that shortly, there is a ordinance that says the planning director interprets the condition, because by definition, conditions have ambiguities. And as time passes and conditions change, it is the job of the planning director to interpret that condition. And in this case, that's exactly what happened, and I will show it to you, and I believe it's a fully binding interpretation that they cannot run from, because now they're positioned on both of the violations and in writing, and I will show it to you, is, "We made a mistake." And while that may be their effort to run away from what they did, "we made a mistake" is neither a good government nor legally appropriate. So, by way of very brief explanation, Class II materials are regulated by Dogger. There are all different kinds of Class II materials. Very simply, when oil is pumped up, it always, or almost always comes with water, it's put in a settling tank, the oil settles to the bottom, the water is at the top because it's lighter, it's siphoned off, put into a tanker truck in industry parlance, that would be called a vacuum truck, but a tanker truck, it's then disposed of in some manner. There are, that's the simplest way to think of oilfield material. Antara is regulated by Dogger, and staff concedes that. The regulation of the county is around operations, not around what Antara can't do fundamentally. So before Antara could even go to a application permit, Antara had to get from Dogger a permit, because Antara needed no permit for using its own reinjection well for its own materials, but to take yours and put it down its well, that required Dogger's approval, because Dogger regulates how Class II material moves and how it must be handled. So if you will bear with me, if you look at our Exhibit Binder A, and I apologize, some of this is imaged and some of it isn't, if you look at Exhibit A, you will see, this is a June 29, 1998, Class II disposal project approval by Dogger. It precedes, it comes before the CUP. If you look at the county file, you will see that this is in the county file as a condition precedent, a requirement for county staff to be doing anything around this proposed project. And if you put up A, if you look at Exhibit, page two, page two lists in A through I what Dogger says can come on site. So if you look at A for a moment, fluids that are brought to the surface in connection with conventional oil and gas production, that's what I just described to you, that's the water. And we go through it, if we go to E, diatom-, and this is highlighted on the board for you, diatomaceous earth filler backwash. Well, that's now not liquid, that's getting semi-liquid solid. So as we go down this list, you will see the materials the regulators authorize to this site. If we go to H, drilling mud and drilling mud filtrate, that's not liquid. That does not transport now or ever in a tanker truck. It transports in an end dump, it transports in a bin, it transports in other kinds of vehicles, other kinds of trucks, but not in a tanker truck. If you go to I, tank bottoms, that's even more solid, and that never transports in a tanker truck. And then H, oil-contaminated soil, that doesn't transport in a tanker truck. So the materials were on the table with Dogger as to what Dogger was saying it was authorizing to come on to this facility before staff wrote the CUP and wrote the conditions. So now let's look at the actual language, because I have letters from staff describing this about trucks, or vehicles, or tractors, or all kinds of different things, but we start with the language. And so Exhibit B, which we'll put up on the screen, is exactly the language of Condition 18. Now, let's start with a moment, with the first part here, and it talks about certain permit ordinances. If the planning director determines that transport of oil, gas, et cetera, by truck is creating traffic problems, shall be transferred off-site by pipeline, et cetera. Now, I dare say that the applicant never raised that as an issue, never proposed that, it's not in anything they submitted, it's not in anything they sought, desired, or intended. So again, staff writes the conditions, not the applicant. So we go to the two sentences that bring us here today. The second sentence, or the first sentence, is, "All trucking to and from the site," and it is a time-limited sentence. It says, "Any trucking, any kind, uncharacterized," notwithstanding Mr. Baca's notion of, well, we're going to carve it up in some manner, and we're only going to think about one thing or the other. Staff took the position that all trucking to and from the site is time-limited. Then there's a second sentence. Now, I'm a lawyer, so I've been trained in words, and I think, I know Steve is, I don't know who else is. Words mean something, and when you read something, the law says, you assume the words are there for a reason, and you read them to mean what they say, meaning you don't assume people say the same things over and over again. So the second sentence, "Except under emergency circumstances as determined by the planning director, no more than 24 tanker truck deliveries per day shall be permitted." So under CUP 18, on its face, there are two operational limits. One, all trucking time-limited. The second, certain kinds of vehicles are limited by number. That's what Antara understood, or Anodyne, because it technically was Anodyne initially, from day one. From the point in time the company started operating up through 2011, when the Bruj Haha started, the company operated with this understanding that I just described to you, and the county staff doesn't disagree with that. And so then, in June of 2011, the 2011 NOV was issued. And if you turn to Exhibit D for a moment, you will see this, the first page, this is the famous 2011 NOV. On page two, there are actually five violations identified. On page two, the first one is exactly what you have before you in the 2014, almost word for word, the claim of exceeding the allowable number of truck deliveries. Now you'll note that the, and this is important as this evolves, the violation is not exceeding the allowable number of tanker truck deliveries. So staff initially took the position, when the issuance of 2011, we're going to lump trucks of all different sizes together, and we're not going to see the difference in the language. And you will see that they say, here's how you can abate it. Abatement can be achieved by sufficient documentation that you're limiting the number of trucks, or applying for and receiving approval for a modification to CUP to allow more vehicle trips as part of the approved project. Now, this becomes very interesting in about five minutes, and the reason it's interesting is because what staff already told you is that in 2000, the county board of supervisors changed the zoning, it became a non-conforming use, and therefore, there can be no permit modification. The position of staff through this whole process, and you will see it documented, has been, "You cannot have a permit modification, because that is expanding the use and therefore impermissible." But they tell Antara, "Okay, you can apply for a modification." That's the initial analysis of planning in terms of what can happen. So Antara responds to this NOV. And if I can, before we leave the NOV, keep in mind, number one is operational. The NOV, number one, in 2011, is you're having too many trucks or tanker trucks, or whatever we argue about the language is, too many of those. I call that an operational limitation. The only abatement is, "Don't do it, because you can't change the permit." Even though they're telling us you can, you can't change it. So there is no compliance agreement around it. It's, "Don't do it." The others, two through four, or two through five, are site plan issues or building plan issues. You have fire issues, we want this vehicle, building moved, we want this permitted, we want these tanks done. Those are building and site things, and so you do have compliance agreements around those. Those are, "Okay, pull a permit to permit this, or change this, or accomplish that." Those are compliance agreement structures. So now what happens in response to this notice of violation is Antara responds. And if you look at Exhibit E, you'll see that Exhibit E is a letter of June 27, 2011 from Sespe Consulting, who was and still does work for Antara. And they address in this letter all of the notices of violation and say, "Okay, this is what we're going to do. Let's just focus on the first, if we can." The first one is the truck trips, which you can't solve with a compliance agreement. They say, "The language in the permit condition is ambiguous and unclear." So Antara puts on the table, right out of the box, in response to this NOV that doesn't even track the language of the CUP. There's a, there's a problem here that's in terms of ambiguous and unclear, precisely these issues. Then the next thing that happens is, if you go to Exhibit F, is you'll see a letter from Shepherd, Mullen, Richter, and Hampton, who are counsel for Antara. They're real smart around land use issues. This letter was written and distributed to your planning director on June 28, 2011. Now you need, before we go to this, you need to know something. From the date of this letter up to today, the county has never, never written or communicated a basis for disagreement with this legal opinion. You have nothing in your file from staff, no letters or documents saying the legal analysis provided by Shepherd and Mullen back on June 28, 2011 is inaccurate, or on July 28, 2011, excuse me, is inaccurate in any regard whatsoever, not even in the staff report that brings us here today. So let's look at it. The first part, this letter specifically addresses Condition of Approval 18 in the CUP regarding the number of permitted tanker truck deliveries. So the lawyers say, "Okay, we're going to give you an opinion on what we think this language means and why." And then they say, "The issue posed is whether 18 restricts the number of tanker truck deliveries, or whether it restricts all trucks," because that, at the end of the day, is what we're talking about here today. Here's what we think, and they've reviewed the entire administrative record, they've reviewed the entire file, and they opine that 18 only restricts the number of tanker trucks on the face of the language. And if you go further, you'll see on page two, they, yes, they, they say why. And I would urge you to read this legal opinion, which has never, never been rendered in disagreement on anything from county staff or county council. The county- The county's position is unfounded because, one, the plain meaning, that means something to lawyers. That's language lawyers use. Plain meaning says you read the words to mean what they say on their face. The plain meaning expressly restricts only tanker truck deliveries. Two, the administrative record direct demonstrates it was limited only to tanker truck deliveries and not all truck deliveries in terms of the number limitation. And on page three, they explain further that the county's interpretation, which is exactly what you're hearing today, is simply wrong as a matter of law. And they explain that quite clearly, again, focusing on the language. The tanker truck deliveries is time-limited. It means something. It is not ambiguous on its face as a matter of law. It goes to the dictionary because we know that your planning director says. That's what happens. I, as the planning director, interpret conditions. If it's not defined in the document itself, I go to the dictionary, and that helps me make my planning director determination. So that's, that was her position back then. It's what she said to Ms. Coleman. And they quote it. And they explain what that means. Antera also, if I can direct you to Exhibit G, further responds on this issue shortly thereafter, on July 28, from Cespi. And in this letter, again, raises the issue of this claim of exceeding the number of trips. And then Cespi points out, if we can go to the next, well, we can go further than the dictionary. Let's look at the vehicle code. So they cite the vehicle code. It has a definition. It says, a tank vehicle is a motor vehicle that is designed to transport any liquid or gaseous material within a tank. That's not an M dump. It's not a dump truck. It's not a bin. It's not any of these other things that have been used in use in the oil field transport world for decades and decades and decades. So what happens next? Antera says, okay, there's this dispute about what does Condition 18 mean. So they ask for what they're entitled to, under your ordinance. They want a planning director determination. So if you look at Exhibit H, you'll see a letter. And on August 16, 2011, again, referring to this operational issue, this NOV one, Antera is working with the planning director to clarify. And in a other letter, formally asked the planning director to provide her determination as to the proper interpretation of the phrase tanker truck deliveries. Because that's what people who deal with the county or director to do, not just by planning, not just by your ordinance, but that's good government. When there is this issue, the buck needs to stop on someone's desk under ordinance and the position of planning. It stops on Ms. Prilhart, since she's been the director. They said, okay, we want a formal determination to understand what your position is. So they have the meetings. They have the conversation. And Ms. Prilhart issues her planning director interpretation. And if you go to Exhibit I, and specifically page three, and I've highlighted these for you, but we'll pull it up here. And so you know, for the record, the administrative process that provides for a planning director determination is Section 8114-4, because that's what's supposed to happen. But let's read what this letter is. This letter is a letter to Ms. Prilhart from Antera. And it says in pertinent part, "Antera has had multiple meetings with you and Mr. Baca regarding the term tanker truck and tank deliveries. You have confirmed, and we greatly appreciate your confirmation, that as written, Condition 18 only regulates tanker trucks." The planning director made a determination and communicated it to the citizen that was regulated, and the citizen confirmed that. And until this brouhaha in 2014, and I think frankly, even to now, your planning director has never disputed that she made this determination. There is no letter, or memo, or communication back saying, oh, I didn't make a determination. I didn't render my opinion as the regulatory administrative person as to what this language means. Now, that created a problem. Let me tell you what the problem was. And staff was quite clear about what the problem was. Because of that legal regulatory interpretation, there was no limit on non-tanker trucks. There were all trucks within hours of limitation, and there were tanker trucks limited by number. But the consequence of that legal determination by staff was, we got a big problem. Because now, there is no regulatory oversight on non-tanker trucks. What do we do? So staff went to Antera and said, let's make a deal. We cannot and don't want this unlimited. It's a non-conforming use. So we can't come back to the Planning Commission and say, change the CUP. We can't modify the CUP. But the planning director determination led to the inexorable result of no regulation on non-tanker trucks. So they continued their conversation. We have presented to you the number of currently unregulated non-tanker trucks that Antera will agree to limit as part of a deal. We will concede and agree in a bargain to be bound by a limitation that is not in the CUP because we want to try to go forward. We want to not be in conflict. We're willing to make a deal. And the last time I checked, government is bound by deals. It's bound by contracts. It's bound by under estoppel. It's bound by under fraud. It's bound by vested rights. They said, okay, we have a problem. Will you agree to a limitation that is not otherwise legally cognizable? And Antera then engaged in that negotiation. What will those non-CUP limitations be, given the planning director's determination? So if you go to Exhibit J, you'll see this is correspondence to Antera from Planning, where he responds to a letter of October 19. So if you go to I, which we just were at, you'll see that's the letter of October 19. That's the letter that confirms the planning director determination, confirms that Antera is willing to enter into this otherwise non-required agreement. And he says, thank you for your letter. He doesn't say anywhere in this letter, you cite the planning director determination wrong. You misunderstand it. You are lying, cheating, thieving knuckleheads. There's no dispute with the accuracy. Yes, sir.
Your comments, present comments, are related to, you referring to the discussions related to the compliance agreement?
No, sir. I don't believe it's a compliance agreement. I believe it's a contract. And as a result, only two, if you're asking me, where does this lead? Because I'm happy to-
These comments that you're referring to on this particular document, I, and the agreements, et cetera, the context of those discussions were-
Okay, well, in November, in 2011, the county asserts 24 limitation. Antera says, there is no limitation on non-tanker trucks. There's only a limitation on tanker trucks. They then have meetings with the planning director, and the planning director issues a planning director determination, which is no limit on non-tanker trucks, limit of 24 on tanker trucks, and will you, Antera, make a deal with us? Will you agree to limit the otherwise unregulated non-tanker trucks as part of a resolution?
Thank you.
Okay, is that, if I wasn't clear before, I apologize. Sure.
Commissioner Duquesne.
In, you know, briefly reading over these, the letter from Mr. Baca to Mr., is it Ailing or Iling?
Are you looking at J that's up on the board?
I'm looking at J.
Okay, yeah.
And it says, thank you for your letter of October 19, 2011. And it says that it's a proposal to abate the outstanding violations.
Yeah.
But the Exhibit I, the letter, October 19, from Antera, not on letterhead, doesn't say that it's proposing to abate outstanding violations. Instead, it says the purpose is to revise Condition 18. Is, so is the, is the letter referring to this? Is the letter in J referring to this in I? Is that your position?
Yes. And let me tell you why. If you look at the prior Cespi letters, and I haven't, I don't want to take the time to go through it. When you look at these prior Cespi letters, you'll see that they talk about all the other building site-specific abatements, and what is going on, and how they're going to work on it and enter into a compliance agreement to resolve it. And I will tell you, Commissioner Idukas, that if you were to look at the planning file, there is only one letter of October 19. There is no other. What you're looking at are documents that were obtained in large part from Planning's files. So we know this is the only letter. And if you look at it, he acknowledges receipt. He says, in sentence two, "The County Planning Division," please, "the County Division has reviewed the proposal and finds merit in many of the proposed parameters under which the facility would operate." And then I'd like to go to the last sentence because this seems to me to be a quite important sentence. "Execution and implementation of this agreement would abate the violations and clarify the permitted operational limits of the subject facility." The word "and" is important in lawyer land, or is disjunctive, and is conjunctive. That means this sentence deals with two separate things. One is, abate the violations. The second is, clarify the permitted operational limits. Why does the county write it that way? They write it that way because they want to bind Antera to what Antera says it will agree to, which is a limit on non-tanker trucks that the planning director has already determined doesn't exist in the CUP. So the county wants a contract. So how does this then unfold? And I will come back to Notice of Violation 2 in a moment because that was unfolding at the same time. And so let's go to the compliance agreement, Exhibit L. And this is drafted by the county. And if you go to page three, you'll see there's going to be this agreed-upon limitation of tanker and non-tanker truck trips. Now, this is my question to you. If this is a non-conforming use, and the use cannot be legally expanded, that's what staff tells you here today. Staff cannot legally enter into any kind of document that would expand the use. So what this has to be, unless staff, I guess, says they acted illegally, is a agreement that implement, that document on this issue that implements an agreement. And I'll show you where they say that in a moment. This is a document under this section that implements a deal. We have interpreted the CUP this way. You have agreed to contractual limits and in the context of that transaction. And if you go to page five, item four, please, the tanker and non-tanker delivery limits. So in the compliance agreement, not just in this schedule of what will be allowed for these two, the staff says, okay, we get it. There are tanker and non-tankery deliver limits, and they won't be exceeded. They are contractually binding Antera to the deal in paragraph four, saying, you've agreed, your operational parameters are in this way. So then what happens is, if you'll go to Exhibit O, then what happens is we come up to 2013. And there's no indication, by the way, no allegation that Antera doesn't comply with its deal. We're going to limit this way even though we're not otherwise legally required to. And they know Antera's spending all this money because Antera is coming to the county, as they've alluded to in their staff report, with, we want to do this, we're doing this, we're improving this, we're doing that. So the county staff knows all this money is being spent around these operational parameters that have been contractually agreed to. So on, in Exhibit O, you have a draft letter that staff sends to Antera's representative, Cespi. And I thought it was interesting that staff sent a draft letter. But they did, and we have it. And we actually will talk in a moment about the final letter that issues. But let's look at the initial thinking of staff. If you go to page two, you'll see, okay, first group, first group, site plan and building code issues. All of the violations have been abated. It's all good. That's what the draft letter says. Now, you don't need a compliance agreement anymore. Done. You've abated all the building and site violations. You don't need a compliance agreement as a matter of law, unless, unless you want to continue to bind Antera to the deal because you can't modify the permit legally. So the only contractual way that the staff could force Antera to commit to the limitation of what was otherwise not limited legally was the second, truck trips. And what does this draft letter from staff tell us about truck trips? You go to the next page. As indicated above, Condition 18 specifically authorizes 24 tanker trucks per day to delivery material to the site, and then articulates a calculation. And then it says, "In the development of the compliance agreement, it was recognized that the operation of the Antera facility involves deliveries of Class II oilfield waste by trucks that are not tanker trucks. Limits on those trucks, on these trucks, were established in the terms and conditions." We made a deal that the non-tanker trucks are unlimited. We've made a deal. We're documenting it in the terms and conditions. And Mr. Baca proposes in this draft a document on how we're going to manage going forward these operational parameters. And he attaches what he calls his request for deliveries above permit limits. So what does he tell us? He has type of delivery, if you look at it. Tanker, non-tanker. Not all trucks, not any vehicles. Not all trucks, not any vehicles, tanker and non tanker. And then he says, here's how we're defining it. Any truck that is hauling fluid that is ready for injection is a tanker truck. Well, that's exactly what Doggers Permit contemplates, that's exactly what Antara said, that's exactly what Shepherd, Mullen, Richter, and Hapton opined, it's exactly what the planning director opined in her planning director determination. And then he says, "The total deliveries, including emergency," because this is a rounded emergencies, "must exceed either 624 tanker or the 785 non tanker limits." Again, confirming Antara's acceptance of an otherwise non-existent limitation. So then, if you look at P, you'll see Cespi responds and says, "We want to negotiate some more around this non tanker, because it's unlimited, and we want to renegotiate the deal, because we'd like to change what it is." And if you go to page, I think it's two, excuse me, three, you'll see what, what Antara says. "We want to simplify this going forward, we want to abolish the distinction, just give us a number. We don't want to have to try to keep track under the deal that's there, given the language of the CUP." And so they make a proposal, "Let's change the deal." And the county responds. If we go to Exhibit Q. If you look at the first part, this letter from county, provided in response to your letter of December 20 and 15. In other words, here's the response to these two interactions, where here's my draft of the go forward on the operational parameters, here's Antara trying to renegotiate the deal. And staff says, "No, we're not going to renegotiate the deal. This is the formal letter." So if we go to page two, first, we have what we have, site plan and building code issues, same as the draft letter. And he says, "All of the site and building code are abated. All done, finished, don't need a compliance agreement, don't need a contract, don't need anything in place, done." Then he says, "Okay, we're going to talk about truck trips." And he changes the language a little bit, and quite interestingly, in this formal now letter. If we go to the next page, you'll see, after he quotes it, he reiterates what he said before. "The condition authorizes 24 tanker trucks, not all trucks, tanker trucks, per day, delivery material to the site," and describes those limitations. Then he responds, "It is requested in the Feb. 15 letter that we eliminate these distinctions between tanker and non tanker that the planning director has determined exists under the language of the CUP. We don't, we don't, we, we don't want to do that," Antara says. He says, "County planning cannot authorize this request, as it would constitute an expansion of a nonconforming facility. Such an expansion can only occur through a zone ordinance, et cetera." So again, if what staff is telling you now is that this CUP only regulates, or regulates all trucks, he's telling you then, it doesn't. The CUP regulates only time on all vehicles and 24 tanker trucks, and we will not blend them together, because that would be an expansion of use. And you've made a deal, you've agreed to limit what is otherwise not legally limited. And then he says, "In the development of the deal, it was recognized that the operation of the facility involves deliveries by trucks that are not tanker trucks. Limits were established under the terms and conditions. We made a bargain, we're not going to change it." And then he adds something, no, go back. He adds something at the end, excuse me, I'm sorry, this is the last sentence. And this is not inconsistent with what he said. "We've recognized, and the planning director made this determination." He then formally presents Antara with the same document that he presided in draft, saying, "This is how we are going to implement the deal." If you go to the last page of his letter, we have, same exhibit, Craig? P? P? Next? Okay, you didn't do it. If you look at it, his exhibit, I apologize, I didn't blow it up, it's exactly the same as the one before. Mr. Baca just says, "Type of delivery, tanker versus non tanker." That's not it. Note, "Any truck that is hauling fluid that is ready for injection is a tanker truck." And then two, he defines the deliveries as having to be captured by both description of tanker and non tanker. Now, that's what happens. It's not in the staff report, but that's what happens. And so really, the truth of the matter is, under CUP 18 and the planning director's determination, you have two alternatives, and only two alternatives. One is that you grant the appeal, and it's the original planning director legally binding determination. CUP 18 says there are all truck deliveries time limited, and specific tanker truck deliveries number limited. And that results in no limit, no limit on non tanker trucks. Or you do what we think is the honest thing, and what we are trying to figure out why we're here. And that is, you grant our appeal, subject to our client reconfirming the deal, because our client made a deal, and has stood by it, and is willing to stand by it, and as a parenthetical, and I footnote this in our, in our document, when this came to a head before the NOV, I went to staff and said, "Obviously, we are in disagreement. Let's agendize this for some direction from the planning commission. Let's go to these folks before we're in a notice of violation, before my client spends a ton of money, before my client is dragged through the proverbial mud. Let's go to the decision makers and say, 'Here's what the facts are, give us some direction.'" And I was told, "Nope, not going to let you agendize it." So I'm here telling you that whether it's under, whether it's under legal determination made and followed, and acknowledged repeatedly by staff, whether it's by contract principles, promissory estoppel, we relied on it, spent $2 million bucks improving, and a bunch of people getting hired, made contractual commitments with customers, whether it's based on vested rights, because I think that when a planning director under ordinance makes a determination and implements it, and people will rely on it, that's a vested rights issue, whether I lather it up any legal way you want, at the end of the day, that's the lay of the land. And my client wants, and always has wanted, to continue to comply with a voluntary limit, because nobody can come to you and say, "Give us a legal modification." So the only way to solve the planning department's problem was the deal. I want to, then, if I can, briefly turn my attention to NOV two, because from our point of view, this is even more maddening. When you look at the notice of violation, at least in my world, the notice of violation is the charging document. The notice of violation, number two, which is language wise in the charge, virtually identical to 2011, says the following. "This is the factual predicate of the charge that my client has dragged before you on. In response to a March 14, 2014 public complaint, Ventura County Watershed Protection District conducted an investigation and found that mud from the Antara's Oxnard facility had been tracked onto Woolley Road." That's the factual assertion of a violation. And by the way, they never pick up the phone and say, "We've got a problem." They never pick up the phone and say, "There's an issue." They never raise it, they just put it in a public notice of violation. And I've done a Public Records Act search for five years, and I cannot find a case where staff has gone to an NOV off of a single inspection without education and working with the, with the people in the community to solve the problem. But that's the factual predicate. So let's answer in part your questions. If you go back to the original 2011 NOV, it's the same thing, tracking mud, you need to do stuff. If you look at the documents, what you'll find is the following. Exhibit C. If you look at Exhibit C in the book, this is the Watershed Protection Program inspection in March of 2011, that is the predicate for the original 2011 notice of violation. And you'll see, under April 1, 2011, follow-up inspection revealed compliance, and you'll see that the process was to give a verbal warning, and there was a communication, there was a problem, a follow-up solved, and a verbal warning. Then what you'll see, if you look at this, is the, the county said, "Well, we want you to do this SWEAP," and that Ms. Coleman talked to you about with far more knowledge than me. And if you go to Exhibit K, what you'll see is, here's this, here it is, here's the SWEAP. And when you go to the bottom, here's YK Law, who is with the county, saying, "reviewed and approved, all good. Done, finished, solved."
We have a question.
Yeah, you interrupt me anytime you want.
I'm sorry for the interruption.
No worries.
But I noticed that the, the Exhibit K is dated February 7, 2012, and the, what did you call it, the predicating what? Is dated March 2011.
Which, with the predicating, correct, correct, the original.
What's the reason for a nearly year-long delay?
This is, if, if you go into the other stuff we were looking at, the original one happens, when you see it, it's been verbal warned and solved. Then when you go to the notice of violation, the original 2011 notice of violation, you'll see that the notice of violation, let me direct you to it, so that you have a clear and unambiguous answer. Give me two seconds. Perfect. If you'll go to Exhibit B, that's the 2011 NOV. So you have the March inspection, the April sign off saying it's okay, then in June of 2011, they issue the violation, and the violation, if you go to number four, which is on page four, is, "We want you to do SWEAP compliance."
Okay, I don't see the, where you say it's okay. I don't see where you characterize that. I see an exhibit saying dated March of 2011, saying that you were given a verbal warning.
Yes.
And then a June 14, 2011 notice of violation.
Okay, so here.
So you're saying there's something in here? I'm wondering if.
Yeah, no, let's, let's pull up, if we can, Exhibit C. Exhibit C, if you look at it, if you look at the notation on it of April 1, 2011, under action enforcement taken, March 16, met, too few shake racks, wanted them maintained differently, et cetera. April 1, 2011, follow-up inspection revealed compliance.
Thank you.
Got it? Okay, so that's what happens with that initial inspection, and then when the, the notice of violation issues, they say, "Not what we have here." In other words, if you look at the notice of violation from 2011, on page four on this issue, "It's operation of a facility involving the processing of et cetera requiring a state water resources control board general permit." And they don't make a factual allegation of a problem in March, like they do this one that brings us here. They say, "We want you to pull a permit with the state water resources control board." And then if you read the documents that follow, and I didn't frankly focus on these, but I can walk you through them, the experts and consultants involved, Cespi are saying what Sally was saying, which is, "We're exempt, we're not subject to it, we don't agree with your interpretation, but we're willing to do it to try to solve it." And then that results, through that process, under the compliance agreement in Exhibit K, where the SWEAP is obtained, and the county staff reviews and approves it. So it's closed, and we've already looked at now three or four pronouncements by staff following this date, where staff is saying, "All of the building and site issues are solved. They're not an issue, you are in compliance." So now let's go to, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. So yell at me if I didn't, all right? And to help you, if you go to M for a moment, maybe this'll assist you. If you go to M, this is an email of March 19, 2012, from Jane Farkas at Cespi to Franca Rosengren, around this issue. And if you go to number two, "Brian Baca and I worked with WPD Stormwater, agree on an acceptable means of compliance. I sent them the signed forms on Feb. 8. Attached for your reference, I'll also forward our email communication." So this is under that whole process, okay, we will accede to pulling the permit, even though we think we're exempt, here's us doing it, and then subsequently staff signing off on it, and saying, "We have what Commissioner Anstott was asking about, we, we did it. It's all, all done." So now, let's, let's look at what brings us here, because if you look at the notice of violation number two, it's exactly the same thing, and, but this time it's different. It says two things. One, that on March 14, there was an inspection, mud was found tracked to the facility. Factual predicate number one in the notice of violation. Factual predicate number two.
Excuse me, what exhibit are you on?
I'm sorry, this is in the staff.
Okay.
This is their notice of violation. I'm sorry, I do not know the exhibit number, I apologize, Commissioner Anstott. It's the NOV of June 25, 2014 that brings us all here today. Five? Is that, is it, it's Exhibit, thank you, thank you. It's Exhibit 12, this is the June 25 NOV. Number one on page two is the trucks, which we have all talked about. And on page four is the second NOV, which is the one that I'm now talking about. Are we, with me?
Page 130 of your staff report.
Thank, thank you. I apologize, I should have included in my exhibit book for ease of reference. Okay, all right, so, so the same, the same NOV, it's virtually the identical language from the 2011, but now there are two predicates. One, March 14 inspection, and two, we want you to pull a SWEAP. Right now, keep in mind, from the time staff signed off in 2012, Right now, keep in mind, from the time staff signed off in 2012, done, you did it, you're all good. From that point until my client gets this NOV, nobody picks up the phone and says, "We've changed our mind. We think the document's not sufficient. We think it's defective. We made a mistake." They tell me that now. Within the last week, I've gotten a letter from your staff saying, "Oh, Mr. Law made a mistake." But they don't tell us that before the NOV. So we're blindsided with this NOV. We're blindsided, not just because of the fact that we complied with the SWEP requirement in 2012 and staff signed off, but we're blindsided with this claim of March 14, 2014. So let's pull up, if we can, Exhibit U. Because Ms. Coleman talked to you about this. Exhibit U. Okay. We don't have it showing for you. I apologize. So let's walk through it together. In the upper right-hand corner, this, a stormwater quality management report, which my client's given on the day of inspection, March 14, 2014, from same guy, Chris Stevens. And he went out there at 2:30 PM. The incident is tracking of dirt into the roadway. So let's read what his inspection report says. "No tracking of sediment observed at the time of inspection." See photos. "Observed slight tracking from the farm across the street from Antares." Now, we wonder why staff, in support of the NOV when we get it, attaches a photo from this report. It had seven photos attached. Their report, their NOV to our client, attaches one of the seven photos that the inspector took confirming no tracking from Antares. And he then, thank you, and if you drop down, there you go. "No tracking of sediment observed. Slight tracking from across the street." It's not my client's. And then he says, "Here's what I'm finding. No violation." Then he goes down. Incident referred. No referral. Then he goes further. Incident concluded. Yes. Now, I wonder why I'm sitting here or standing here in front of you on an NOV that makes a claim that on March 14, the Watershed Protection District conducted an investigation, this is the investigation, and found that mud from Antares Oxnard facility had been tracked onto Woolley Road. That was not what he concluded. His report has never been amended. It's never been modified. We have never been told he made a mistake. We've never been told he's a knucklehead. We've never been told that we shouldn't rely on a document that we got. And they send us an NOV. And we go to the county and go, huh? We walk in to a meeting and go, "Really? How can you factually allege a violation? Tell us what we're missing here." We'll look into it and get back to you. Here I am. I don't see anything in staff's report withdrawing that factual predicate for the claim or disputing that this was done or anything of the sort. So in lawyer land, if I can characterize it that way, you look at the affirmative defenses we wrote to the appeal, like, "It's not fair. You guys are not treating us right. Something's really wrong here." Now, you know why? We're insane with this process when we get this kind of thing. And the SWEP, of course, they now tell us after they file the notice of violation, and after all of this, if you go to Exhibit FF, here's what they say. I learned this October 13, a week ago. Here's the letter I get from planning. "We've been informed that a stormwater violation in this 2011 NOV had been abated. At that time, Mr. Ugah Law of the Watershed Protection District indicated that the facility was in compliance." That's what we thought. That's what the document showed. That's what the sign-offs were. And if we can go to the next page. "It was later determined..." Now, I don't know when, and I don't know by who, and I don't know with what authority. And it certainly is not in the notice of violation that my client received that brings us here. Somebody decided he made a mistake. Well, don't you think we ought to get a phone call? Don't you think that ought to be in the notice of violation that my client is publicly accused of violating rules and regulations? So we have, and I mean, I don't know how, first of all, I don't think they can retract an approval. They certainly can't retract an approval without due process. They can't retract an approval without communication. They can't retract an approval off a notice of violation that publicly accuses us of something a week before the hearing with no disclosure of who, what, when, where, or why. So from a factual matter, both the factual event of this notice of violation number two is not supported by their own inspection, and their claim of the non-compliance of SWEP is wrong, too. Now Sally Coleman told you, "Way bigger fish to fry." So she turned that one in again, and it's all done. But it's important around this appeal because this whole process is fraught with changes of position and binding representations and communications. And then when confronted with them, and they don't like what they did or decided or the deals they made, changing our mind. We're going to do it over. So let me give you, yes, sir?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Who is Mr. Law?
Mr. Law, I'll let Mr. Barnes, since he's...
I have, and here's where I'm going with my question. I see what you're referring to. We're referring to those issues related to sign-offs on alleged violations.
Right. In 2012, I showed you his sign-off saying, "We had fully complied. It was abated." They wrote us letters saying it was fully abated.
I'm looking at Exhibit C, the illicit discharge report dated March 16 of 2011.
Right. This is before the first NOV.
Investigated by Chris Stevens.
Right.
Signed off by Chris Stevens.
Correct.
I'm looking at Exhibit U, similar report, Chris Stevens, with no signature. And now I'm hearing, now I'm wondering who Mr. Law is. And I guess, in retrospect, I know Chris Stevens. I assume we're only talking about one Chris Stevens.
Well, there's actually two that work for the county. There's Chris, who's the head of RMA.
Uh-huh.
And then there's Chris at VRSD.
That what?
There are two Chris, actually two Chris Stevens that work for the county. One is Chris Stevens, who's the head of RMA.
I know Chris Stevens.
Right. And then there's a different Chris Stevens at Ventura Regional, who does these inspections under contract.
Is that the Chris Stevens that we're referring to in Exhibit C?
Yes.
That signed off on this document?
To the same guy. In other words, the county...
They both work at the same, they both work for RMA. One heads it and one works for it.
I think technically, the Chris Stevens who does these reports works for, I think, the Ventura Regional Sanitation District that does these inspections under contract for the Watershed Protection District, which is in Public Works. I believe that's the stacking of the hats.
While Exhibit C is signed, and signed is, and there's an argument about what it represents, Exhibit U, a similar report citing no violations noted, is unsigned.
Right. We don't have a signed copy, but I'd certainly invite the chair to ask staff whether they dispute Exhibit U.
I guess I have a question as to the validity of this document in that it's, for all intents and purposes, a prepared draft by someone that was not signed. Staff, anybody help me here?
It's in your staff report, isn't it?
As signed? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got to speak. Somebody from staff coming up that may be provide assistance here.
This is what we're looking at here.
That must be a draft that was not signed by the inspector. If you wish, I can go through the file and double-check if we have the signed form. I don't see it right now in front of me. If you give me a couple minutes, I can double-check. But obviously, that's a draft that has not been signed by the investigator.
So we don't know if we have an original signed in the file.
Can I just double-check that really quick?
Yeah, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, and I might just, in regard to your question, because of course, this document, we put on the table to the county staff within two or three days of receiving the NOV. We handed them our copy, which our client got, and said, "This is what we've been told. This is what we were handed. We've never been told this isn't the document. We've never been told that it's inaccurate." And I would note that in your staff report, you are not told that this is not, or there is some other inspection document that was changed or altered or modified.
We have staff back on the podium.
So this is the March 14, 2014.
Oh, prove it. Here it is.
And it's signed by Chris Stevens. I'm not sure how...
May I look at it? Okay. So she's been kind enough to hand me the original. And if we can go through it together, it is...
We're talking about Exhibit U.
Exactly.
On your present...
It is identical to the one in my exhibit book, except that it has the signature on the bottom. So I would like, I'd like to have this copied, made part of the record, so you have a clean record showing that our Exhibit U, which our client was given without a signature, is consistent with the county document showing incident concluded, no violation, determination that the tracking came from across the street.
Okay. If I can ask staff to, sometime before the meeting's over, provide it to Turk to...
Okay. All right.
So who is Mr. Law?
Mr. Law, as I understand it, works for these folks. He's the one who...
I mean, he's cited in your quotation, so I...
Yeah, well, I don't, I've not met the man.
Staff?
He is the individual whom I understand is affiliated with these folks who signs off on the SWEPs.
Mr. Law used to work as a water quality engineer in Watershed Protection District. Shortly.
He's no longer...
He's no longer with Watershed Protection District.
Okay. Thank you.
So county staff signs off as they documented it. Now, the last piece of this puzzle that I just would like to share with you, which is in part why we're just, if you'll forgive my colloquialism, jumping out of our skin, is if you look at Exhibit BB, double B for me, we'll put it up on the screen. To put in a concrete driveway, my client has to encroach into the county public way. So the first thing you have to do to put in a concrete driveway is you have to go to Public Works and get an encroachment permit. Will they let you do this within the Public Works? So if you look at Exhibit BB, this is the encroachment permit. And if you go down to the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see it was originally pulled on December 23, 2013, which was valid then till beginning of January, and then it was extended because my client was trying to keep it in place. And as Ms. Coleman told you, and you'll note, December 23, 2013 is way before any notice of violation, way before the county's ragging on them. She made a decision from a business point of view, "I think a concrete driveway's a good thing. Less hassle for us, better for the community. We want to do the right thing." So they spend the money to get the engineering and the plans and all of that. They go and pull the encroachment permit. They take the encroachment permit and all the plans to staff because you have to get a permit. Any work that's done on the site requires a permit. I'll let you guess what staff said. They said, "We will not issue a permit because it would be an expansion of use. We will not let you put in the driveway. We will not let you do it because our view is putting in a driveway is an expansion of use." Consistent, I might add, with all of their positions around expansion of use, which of course ties back to my whole conversation around truck trips. So we look at this and we say, "Really? Really? We're being violated for not putting in a concrete driveway? When we asked to put in a concrete driveway? We spent the money to do it? We paid for the permit, and we came to you, and you said, 'Pound sand'?" Six months, seven months before you throw us under the bus under an NOV? And so as to NOV number two, our position is that they can't substantiate it legally. They can't substantiate the factual predicate of the investigation, which showed no violation. They have provided you no evidence that on that date there was anything. They have an underlying document that showed SWEP compliance. They have no basis for saying to you, "We've changed our mind." And they've also admitted, "We've done it again, even though we weren't legally required." And they haven't withdrawn notice of violation two. They haven't, we're having a hearing on notice of violation two, with those being the facts. So we believe that with respect to notice of violation two, they fail. Clear as plain as day, they fail. And again, without trying to be too repetitive, now you know why some of our affirmative defenses are pretty upset around what on earth is going on. So again, my client's trying to be a good citizen, just like they have been around the truck trips. And they are, my client's position is, the NOV number two has to be upheld in terms of our appeal. And we tell you now what I have said to them in writing on a dozen occasions. You withdraw NOV two, and an apology would be nice. And tell us you'll approve the driveway, the plans of which we gave you seven months ago, and we're happy to put it in. But I am not putting it in, getting publicly excoriated for violating rules and regulations when we didn't do it. So I can go on for longer, but that's our position, and I'm trusting that I'll have a chance for further comments after public comments.
Thank you. Any questions? I have a question, County Council. Given the general issues and conditions of CUPs and various CUPs that are issued, that sets limitations, and I understand that we deal with VOPs and county planning entered into compliance agreements with the various parties that might be in violation to try to gain compliance. Do the administrative, does the administrative authority of the planning department or planning director allow it to exceed the limitations that are defined within the CUP on a temporary basis to deal with that compliance? How does that operate? How does that operate?
Without answering, making a judgment as to whether that did in fact exceed, which apparently appears, first glance, it did. No, the Planning Director is not entitled or any, until the permit has been modified, you cannot legally modify those conditions or exceed the authority that was granted, either by the Planning Director or by the permutee. It would have to go through a permit modification process to be able to change the terms of the condition. And there's several cases on that that I could find for you if you're interested. Give me a little time to find them.
Commissioner Duquesne.
For clarification in my mind, it doesn't, it appears to be an interpretation of the condition. And we have the position of the appellant that it was exceeding the 24.
Correct. This is, I'm sorry. Finish. Go ahead.
But I'm wondering if it's more, I don't know, a willingness to be flexible in the interpretation?
Well, I think that the letter by Shepherd Mullins correctly stated the standard. When you're interpreting, and I've had this case before in Superior Courts, I'm somewhat familiar with the rules. When you are interpreting a CUP condition, it's the same standard that you use to interpret a law or a contract. And that is, you would look at the plain, ambiguous, unambiguous language of the terms. So the first question is, were those terms plain and unambiguous? So that would be something your commission would have to decide. If it's not plain and unambiguous, then you get to the next level of the rules of statutory There's plenty that might apply here.
And you do look at context.
Well, only if the words are plain and unambiguous, I mean, or not. So if you look at the words and you can't figure out, they're kind of vague and they could mean a couple of different things, then you can go to a deeper level of interpretation. So are the terms plain and unambiguous? That's a question you have to answer. One of the, you're entitled to give deference to the agency's determination, but it is finally your call. But I was just reading a case, a recent case, that says, you know, if the agency interpretation has vacillated, it's not entitled to much deference. And I think you've heard evidence today from planning that they have a certain interpretation, and you've heard evidence from the appellant that perhaps planning has taken a different interpretation in the past. So I don't know how much deference you can give to the interpretation based on what you've heard today. But as far as flexibility, you got to first, do you think, to make a determination whether you think those terms of Condition 18 are subject to ambiguity?
Okay, well, I don't want to get into deliberations and here.
Thank you. I have three other speaker cards. John Brooks, Jim Hill, and Tomas Liebeck, or Liebich. But they indicate that they support the recommended staff action if that's incorrect, which is to deny the appeal. So if that is incorrect, please, please stand up or step forward.
I'm sorry if that was the case. I support the appeal. My name is Jim Hill.
Just a moment. Just a moment. Okay. So you support the appeal? Okay, Mr. Hill, go ahead.
First of all, I'm a retired petroleum geologist. I'm registered in the state of California as a geologist, and I'm a certified petroleum geologist by the American Association of Petroleum Geologists. I've been in the industry 40 years. I've dealt with a lot of regulation. I know a lot of the frustration that has been going on here. And just for disclosure, I want you to know that I'm here solely on my own accord. I'm not being paid. I'm not a consultant. This is my own time and my own opinions. Right now, as Ms. Coleman described, we are in an oil boom. And we've gone from dependence on foreign oil at better than 62% at its height, down out of the lower 30s, and there's a very, very good chance that we could actually gain energy independence and at the same time provide much more additional revenue to governments, both local, state, and federal. So for me, this is a no-brainer. By supporting industry and supporting jobs, you know, we will go where we want to go and get off of the support of countries that really don't like us. It really comes down to the fact of who's right and who's wrong in this particular case. I'm not going to speak to that because I'm not a lawyer, and my opinions don't matter. Yours do. But really, when you look at the safest way to dispose of oil field waste, injection into a previously produced oil reservoir is the safest, in my opinion. Because for oil to accumulate in the first place, you have to have a trap, and that trap has to be sealed. And I'm talking about sealed for geologic time, millions of years, in order for these oil accumulations to accumulate and eventually be produced. So taking water, which is a byproduct of all oil field production, and as the history of wells continues, the water cut goes up. You know, more, less oil, more water. That's pretty much the way it works. You've got to have somewhere to put the water if you want to continue your oil production. And the safest place to put it is back into a reservoir that you know had oil in it to begin with and is sealed. There's questions about earthquakes. Yes, injection wells in certain areas have caused earthquakes. No doubt about it. You can barely feel them. But in this case, you've had 27 years of injection and no earthquakes. So that, you've got to write that off. Okay? This is not an issue. Groundwater, you've got at least 3,000 feet of sealing sediment between the base of the groundwater table at 1,600 feet and the top of the shallowst injection zones. I've done some research on this. So for me, you know, there isn't any possibility of any kind of groundwater contamination. So it's as I said, what's your alternatives? If you say no to any particular technology, you are implying a yes to something else. How else are you going to get rid of this water? And you either ship it to Kern County, or you throw it in the ocean. And nobody wants to see that. So that's basically my comments. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's my opinions.
No questions. Commissioner Duquesne.
We're calling the training that we got a couple of weeks back regarding this subject. And I just want to get clarification. Is it before the Planning Commission impacts to groundwater or the injection? Is that within the Planning Commission's purview?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duquesne, the two sole issues today is either upholding or not upholding the notices of violation for the two issues before you, fracking and groundwater contamination and all of that. Those were not identified as issues for this facility and are not before you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a card for Wendy Loffland, I think. And I don't have any indication whether you're speaking in support of the appellant or...
I'm speaking against Antara.
Okay, then, if you'll have a seat, please. Have a seat.
I was just trying to correct what was said about...
You'll get an opportunity later.
Because in your own, in your own writing that he showed us, it said...
You'll get an opportunity. The slide will be presented. If you need to address, the slide will be presented. That concludes all of our speakers as it relates to the appellant. We are into the lunch hour. I do have, I do have one card that speaks in support of, several cards, but one card that speaks in support of staff recommendation. Carmen Ramirez, do you want to hear that before we take a break, or do you want to? Okay, Ms. Ramirez, would you come forward, please? And we are going to take a lunch break after this speaker.
Well, that's great, because I'm about to get a ticket. Thank you. Good morning, well, almost afternoon. Carmen Ramirez, I'm Mayor Portem of the City of Oxnard. I'm only speaking on behalf of myself. City has not taken a position. But I'm speaking on behalf of, everybody has to follow the rules, just like the ticket I'm about to get. I want to say that every day I get a contact from a resident or a business who's received a citation in our city. And my role as a city councilperson is not to say, "I'm going to make the problem go away," or tell them what the process is, what the rules are, and whether or not, and just see if they've been treated fairly, and always that's an issue. What is the point of rules and regulations if people don't follow them? What is the message to other people who might feel, "Well, this company, they're big. This individual, they're powerful, and they can do what they want and change the rules to fit their circumstances." I think that would be a bad message, and I do support upholding the notice of violation. This is not about all the other issues, I realize, not about our aquifers, our water emergency, our carbon footprint. Those are issues in the back of everybody's mind. It's about, was the permit violated? I think we have substantial evidence that it was, and I ask you to uphold your Planning Department's notice of violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, I'd like to take a break with the Commission's concurrence. Forty-five minutes, will that take care of anything staff needs to take care of during the break? Okay, we will reconvene at 1:00. I have speaker cards here. Next speaker is Chris Williamson. Please come forward. State your name and address. No Chris Williamson. How about Kitty Morrell, or Merrill?
Hi, my name is...
Excuse me. Next speaker behind her would be Chris Collier, if you could come forward and sit in the first row here, so we can get going. Yes?
Thank you for hearing me. My name's Kitty Merrill. I live in the south end of Oxnard, about two miles from where Antara is. And I've been, you know, a community resident for, since 1985, so since about the time the well was a well. Around the time my first daughter was born, that's when they converted it to an injection well, became a commercial injection well, what, 1998, so when she was eight years old. First I heard of it was just two or three weeks ago, and I'm appalled to find out about it. I know this isn't the place where any of that is going to change, but just the idea that there isn't an environmental impact report on this land use and that for 27 years we've been inserting oil into something that might have been ground sealed originally. But once you put a bunch of other wells, is it still really sealed? And at what point does somebody decide it's full? I just, I've got a lot of concerns about that. And I've got concerns about the amount of traffic. I, you know, since I think Antara has been this invisible entity for a long time, I and a few other people were at the corner of Rose and Woolly yesterday, trying to just make people in the neighborhood more aware. Traffic is crazy there. The fumes from Antara wafted all the way over to Woolly, so we're almost into Oxnard city limits, but it's still county's problem. I was talking to others about dust blowing off the facility. So I think that while there may be a good heart, you know, I'm sure the president of the company wants good things for the environment, it's hard to practice it when you're in the middle of the strawberry fields, in the middle of a very urban area, where that well was in 1985 compared to what Oxnard is now. It's a very different place, and the density is different, and the long-term impacts, I think, are cumulative. So I would really recommend supporting the Planning Council's recommendation and limiting those trucks, keeping, trying to keep us from being flooded out. Water is a precious resource. I learned that in the restroom, just when I went in there. Every drop counts. I think we really need to start counting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by John Brooks.
Good afternoon. My name's Chris Collier. I represent the Coastal Energy Alliance. Our alliance represents a broad range of energy industry stakeholders, labor, suppliers, producers, mineral rights owners, and others that support the safe local production of energy. I'm here to speak on behalf of CEA in support of Antara's appeal. Antara's disposal facility is an integral part of safe local energy production. The facility is highly regulated and safely operates to provide a critical component to local production.
Just a moment. You're speaking in support of the appellant?
Yes.
Okay. I need to change your card then, because you're speaking...
I thought I put that on. Sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead.
The facility is highly regulated and safely operates to provide a critical component to our local production. The facilities support many of the small producers of Ventura County that don't have their own injection wells. When trucks are not able to dispose of the waste locally, they must seek additional facilities farther away, adding hundreds of miles round trip to Kern County, increasing overall traffic and increasing emissions and our footprint, something that concerns the members of our alliance greatly. Look, we live here, we work here, I was born and raised here, and we play here, too. We want to continue to further our region's unique quality of life. As local production increases, we lessen our dependence on foreign sources, as has been mentioned by a lot of countries that don't tend to like us. We must support our safe local energy production, and Antara's critical to that. So we believe the Planning Commission should support the appeal and rescind the violations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Brooks.
Chairman Rodriguez and members of the Planning Commission. I am John Brooks. I'm currently president of Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, known as SeaFrog. And I'm here today to applaud the efforts of your planning staff to actually enforce the terms of CUP 531-1. For the operators of Antara waste disposal wells to knowingly violate the terms of their existing permit, to me and our group, is the height of arrogance. If you look at the numbers, they didn't just slightly exceed their limits by a little bit and ask for forgiveness or a change of their permit, they doubled, even tripled the loads of toxic and hazardous material in tanker trucks, large and small, that traveled down our freeways and down our streets, and certainly onto Oxnard streets, to get to the disposal wells. Truck traffic from oil and gas operations is one of the main concerns of our nonprofit group. This permit actually controls the number of trucks, and enforcement of those limits by the planning staff is what we want countywide. So thank you, Mr. Bach and Ms. Prilhard, for doing this. However, in the last few days, some developments have come to our attention that makes it important that the planning staff and other regulatory agencies look deeper into Antara's operations. For months, we've heard rumors that members of the news media were in possession of what appear to be Antara emails that outline a plan to deceive the public concerning what was in the tankers carrying waste to the injection wells. The emails are apparently sent out by a whistleblower, and we heard that elected and appointed officials also got copies. And I have confirmed that a county supervisor and a member of the Oxnard City Council received these emails. We thought that these disturbing, unethical, and perhaps even criminal acts would come to light, and surely Antara would be asked to explain them. It never happened. So today, following SeaFrog's recent appeal hearing before this same commission, an anonymous source sent us copies of those emails. I've just delivered them to you. I've since confirmed that they're authentic. And since they were allegedly written by Antara President Sally Coleman, who's here today, perhaps you'll ask her about them. If you doubt their authenticity, I could make them available to any law enforcement agency for verification. I've given the copies of the contents of those two emails. In the first email, the co-owner Frank Staben on January 9th of this year, Ms. Coleman allegedly discusses a strategy that will enable her customers to bring fracking fluids that contain carcinogenic chemicals to Oxnard, as long as they call it "produced water." The email advises Mr. Staben that, quote, "It's extremely unlikely that frac chemicals will ever show up in a laboratory analysis as frac chemicals, since they make up 0.05% of a solution. It will make us look like they give a crap about what the enviros think," end quote. The second email was on Antara letterhead. It was sent the next day, January 10th of this year. In it, Ms. Coleman allegedly informs all the clients that, quote, "Antara will not accept any frac fluids at this time. Once the EIR... Once the EIR is finalized and mitigation measures are in place, we'll be happy to reconsider that decision," end quote. Please instruct your staff to determine if this disinformation campaign is true and come back with a report. There are also more rumors circulating about whether the loads are actually tested before being injected into the ground, and I hope any representatives of all regulatory agencies that are here will scrutinize that. Perhaps that is what the subject of the criminal investigation is of Antera, I do not know. The public needs to know that Antera's not just trying to look like a good corporate citizen, but it actually is one. Just for the record and for disclosure, I'm still a journalist as well, and covered by the shield law of California. And in interest of further disclosure, I see that in the case of Kastberger versus Fairfield, before the Court of Appeals, Second District, Mr. Goldenring and Commissioner Anstott were co-councils for the defendant. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Tomas, please. Thomas LaRosa. Rubeki.
Okay.
So Tomas had to leave. My name is Ron Whitehurst, I will be giving his comments.
I'm allowed to speak right now.
My name is Ron.
I'm allowed to speak right now.
Very good, I'm happy to. So Tomas is representing LULAC, a Latino group, and he's the environmental director for Ventura County, and he would like to express support for the staff recommendations and for the commission to uphold the staff's recommendations. And in addition, they would like to see the permit for Antera revoked. And LULAC is in support of banning fracking, and we think it's disingenuous that the, Antera's receiving materials from LA, Orange County, and Kern County, and then building up this case that we need to support the local oil wells, and that there may be a wastewater-injection facility in Santa Paula that would be available for commercial accounts. And then with the recent revelations that the drinking water aquifers in Kern County are contaminated with the fracking chemicals, we think it's really great to have the assurance of the geologist earlier, that, you know, there's a really good separation between the layers that they're injecting into and our drinking water. But the facts are bearing out the fact that, whoa, you know, there is a problem in Kern County, and we would not like to see such a problem in Ventura County. How does one clean up an aquifer? It's a very, very difficult process. So I think we need to at least have the waste disposal companies play by the rules. We all have rules to play, to follow, and we encourage you to hold them to the rules. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you would fill out the speaker card, please. Lupe Anguiano.
My name is Lupe Anguiano, and I am founder and director of Stewards of the Earth. And, Mr. Chairman, may I have just a few minutes to do disclosure, and then I can be timed for my presentation?
Sure.
I have some disclosures.
Certainly.
Okay. Stewards of the Earth has been opposed to SB4. We advocated and worked very hard to communicate with the California Legislature, with Governor Brown, and with Dogger, to not pass SB4. Because opening, oh, I'm in disclosure. Okay. I'm also, was also a member of President Reagan's private sector initiative, and the reason why I'm mentioning this, it was because President Reagan, when he was governor of California, passed the SEQA. And Antera has not passed the SEQA, the law that requires complete disclosure and environmental protection for California's agriculture. I have, I'm 85, and I have lived in California, and I have seen the changes in California. And to go now to my statement, is that energy that is not regulated at all by the government, by the federal government, or by the state, now that SB4 has passed, is not in compliance with California's economy, which is, number one, agriculture, which has enriched our state, number two, of renewable energy, which the state is the leading state in renewable energy, and third, it is not in compliance with the Clean Water Act. And our Clean Water Act, I've worked with our Clean Water Act Director, and the violations of Antera to our Clean Water Act are just enormous. And so I have a report that I gave to our Board of Supervisors and also to you, that explains in detail the violations of Antera. They are not, Antera is in violation of all the regulatory, federal, state, and local requirements. In Ventura County, you are required to make sure that you do not violate health, public health. And Antera, every day, has methane that is on, that goes, the methane gas that goes into our lungs and goes into the agricultural workers that are working right alongside our agricultural industry. I think that SEQA, review of this needs to be made, of the impact that it's having in our strawberries, in our cabbages that are working right along Antera. And I think it is, the presentation of the attorney of Antera, who is, I guess he's earning a lot of money, probably $600 a month, and all of that theater is mockery to the intelligence, the truth, and the integrity of the state of California's intent. That is why Governor, this is why Governor Reagan passed SEQA. I beg of you to look that up, to study it, and to deny. And I support the staff's recommendation, but furthermore, to deny, ban, to ban fracking from California. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we hold the comments? Wendy Loffland?
Okay, I grew up in-
You are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You are.
I went to school in Oxnard, I went to Eau Green and Oneimi High, so I feel it-
Wendy, would you give us your address, please?
184 North Wake Forest.
Thank you.
It's on the card.
Just for the audible record.
Anyway, I don't think we should be degrading the environment in Oxnard any more than it already has been degraded, but concerning Exhibit J, is what he called it, I'd like that to be up there, because right above it, it said the opposite of what he was saying about it. He cut out little pieces in yellow that he thought were nice, and then, you know, gave an offset meaning from what it said in the writing. So he only wanted us to read the yellowed parts, but I would like to show to you what is written above, the two parts that he named in, what he called J. I can't corroborate whether it's J, but that's what he was calling it. There were two highlighted portions.
Can we?
Would you like me to read that into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. The sentence before that she's referring to is the same sentence I was going to talk about. It says, "The compliance agreement is intended to formalize the operation of the facility during the interim period prior to the completion of the facility's relocation."
Right, and it did mention, it was pretty much, it's a conditional of a conditional, conditional on them saying that they were moving to, you know, what was that, Mission Rock? So that was one thing, and, so I just wanted to point out, because he was saying, there's these, what do you say, non-cognizable agreements that were being asked, but I think when you kind of change and cut and paste, I didn't, I'm sorry to say, I didn't observe more closely, I just happened to notice that up there, but if he's doing that sort of a flip-around of the intent on those other, on that portion, he may be doing that on some of the other pages, which I did not get. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Margaret, Margot Davis. My name is Margot Davis, and I have resided in Ventura County for 37 years. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I would like to raise a procedural point, I think I can do it in five minutes, have I got five minutes? The parties to this hearing are Antera and the planning commission, and the public. I think that the public is the most important party to the hearing, and I feel that your procedure discourages public input. I think it actively discourages the democratic process. I think that there were a lot of people that came here who have left, and I say that the public is a party to the action because it concerns public health, a public water, groundwater, public air, a public state of well-being and health in Ventura County, over which you have jurisdiction, and you have the power to act, and you should be considering it in everything that comes before you, because you represent the public. The commission is appointed, correct? But they're appointed by the Board of Supervisors, which was elected by the public. And I'm sure that the public, the planning commission has represented the public well, sometimes, maybe other times not, but they should definitely be encouraging public input and making this as democratic as we can. Now, the issues of, the substantive issues behind this hearing of fracking and of fossil fuels and of pollution and of water supply, those weren't even mentioned all morning by these people that get paid to talk or get paid to listen. The public came here, and they only get like three or five minutes. I think that what they have to say, the ones, they're not all as brave as Lupe to come up here and say it, but they feel as strongly as she does. Many of them were at Antera last night, demonstrating at Rose and Woolly, because they want this to be public, and they want the public to know what this hearing is really about, what it really represents. And so I'm just humbly and respectfully requesting you to consider changing your procedure, so that you allow the public to present their issues first, and not have them fade away after they listen for four or five hours and those issues aren't even raised. Thank you very much.
Juan Delgado.
Good morning, good afternoon, Chairman and staff. My name is Juan Delgado. The first time I noticed something going down there in Antera field over there, I was coming down from dinner, going to my house on Rose, and there were like 15 trucks parked on Rose and Woolly Road, waiting to go.
Sorry, what did you say? You noticed what?
Fifteen tankers.
Okay, thank you.
Going, waiting in line to go into the, into the facility up there. So I said to myself, you know, this farmer hit a jackpot, he's drilling oil out of there. But one of the drivers happened to tell me that they were bringing toxins from Bakersfield. And then I never really pay any attention, you know, because farm workers work around there, and I just see that sometimes, you know, the change of the air, the fumes or whatever, and dust, and they have dust there uncovered in two different colors. One pile is light brown, the other one is black. One time I was driving on Rose, and I guess the black dirt started, the wind came in and started spreading the dust, and it was black, like, I thought it was smoke, I was going to call it, there was a fire at the facility. But then, I go, maybe they, they got access to call the fire department, so I stood there for five minutes, nothing happened, so I figured it's just dust. We got strawberry fields around there, farm workers working in there, I guess, the farmers that own that land there don't care about their employees, or whatever, the people that are picking up the strawberries, or their health. My mom was a strawberry picker, and a tomato picker, and I never understood when these guys used to put fertilizer on the plants, the damage would cost in the person. The last incident that I called the county about, when the Santa Ana winds kicked in, that dust was all over town, not only, not only around the Lemonwood area where I live, but I also was in Colonia, Rose Park, the whole city, you couldn't see the city, because it was all bad. Is it safe for these people to be operating out there, or when they get their permits, you guys just let it go? You're free to do whatever you want. Go ahead, kill the environment. We got two schools with kids, that day, the same day, I arrived to the school, the kids were in recess. The farm workers were planting right across the street, they were planting strawberries. No mask for their protection, I mean, just up on the, up on the area, I mean, breathing all this dust. I'm not an expert on all this stuff than lawyer tech or whatever, I only had a high school education sometimes. I have difficulties understanding all these laws, that you guys, this guy comes with a big folder of laws. You guys put another stack, your library's full of books, of laws and everything, permits, they come in and, who's in charge of going over there at least every three months, or two months, or whatever, to have these people accountable that they're doing the right thing? The citizens of Oxnard, they don't know. I go out there and speak to the community, "Oh, Juan, I thought they, they're just, you know, I thought they were drilling oil." I go, "You guys interested?" Because your kids go to school. These oil companies come, they dig, they leave their mess, and then they take off. We got a contaminated area, half acre, right in the middle of the park. It was fenced, oops, it was fenced. It was fenced, they took out the fence. Now kids are playing with this dirt that is contaminated, throw it up in the air, breathing it, not knowing that they're going to have later on brain damage or whatever, or kidney failures or whatever, and only because politicians don't care to check on these guys, they are endangering the areas. endangering the areas where mostly Spanish or Mexican-Americans live. The people that goes to the fields and, and pick up your, your fruits and vegetables. So what we're gonna do for you guys to do something? They don't even care about politicians to come out and vote to get protected. People that are really interested in, in the environment, they're the ones that come out. But we got the power of the vote, but they don't care. Because they said that nothing is gonna change. Because maybe our leaders don't care. You guys left everything to these high companies to kill us? That's all, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for Chris Williamson. Okay, that concludes all the speaker cards that I have here. Would you step forward, please? No, you're, we've gotten, we've taken your testimony. Thank you. Couldn't do it. Go ahead and give your card, give your card to the clerk if you'd like.
My name is Grant Marcus. My professional capacity is a registered nurse. I filled out, I filled out an orange card. Yeah. Oh, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we need an aerial view of this problem, you know? As we get angry and take sides and all that stuff, we just need an understanding of where oil has been and where it's going. And when we look at, at oil, we have less of it. It's many analysts that say it reached, has reached its peak. It's more expensive. We're drilling, 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 because it's more profitable now. But more importantly, is that we're drilling with new methods of drilling, unlike we have seen before, such as acidification, or hydraulic fracturing, or water stimulation. All these technologies are highly intensive. They take tremendous amounts of water, millions of gallons per well per day, you know, this is, and we're in the middle of a drought. And so this is the aerial perspective of what we've got going. We've got to understand these new technologies, and that's why we're here today, having this problem with trucking. Let me give you an example. In these technologies, because they're more highly intensive, it takes more trucks to load and unload unknown chemicals, 600, 700 of them. It takes a lot of trucks to unload, unload all the tons of silicon sand that these processes now use. So when we're unloading all this stuff, yeah, there's gonna be additional trucks. More trucks means more of an impact on our environment. In other states, they've already done studies on this that show four times the traffic accidents, just simply because there's more trucks. And many of these drivers are asked to drive, you know, a 24-hour shift, which means that they're driving sleepy, and they cause accidents. This is a known problem in other states. It's studies that have been done. So the trucking problem relates to the highly intensive energy that we're using now. It relates to our oil wars, and it relates to less oil for more people. And so that's why, in a general perspective, that's why we're here today. Now, when Mr. Golden Ring says, Dogger says, it sounds to me like he's saying Simon says. And then we're all supposed to jump and do it. But the fact is that Dogger laws are old laws that don't often deal with these new technologies, such as acidification, water stimulation, and hydraulic fracturing. They don't know how to handle yet what we haven't experienced, until something goes ARI or wrong. Further, Dogger makes regulations and laws while succumbing to the pressure of the oil companies. The umbrella organization, the Petroleum Institute, for example, has put on the average $375,000 a year to every legislator. So what kind of impact does this have on Dogger laws that are coming down to our city and county? Shouldn't Ventura be more than Dogger laws that just kind of parrot what the oil companies want? It's kind of like, it's kind of like following the fox in the henhouse. You know, if the fox says you do this, do you do it? Or you, or do you do what's right? Okay, let me give you an example of this. Ms. Coleman says how wonderful Antera is in Kern County. And if you don't accept her business, you give her a hard time, well, she's just gonna move there permanently, and we're not gonna have any business in Ventura County. Well, let me tell you about Kern County. It was just announced by the State Water Resources Control Board, the state, mind you, and Central Valley's Water Resources Control Board, that billions, and I mean billions of gallons of wastewater from injection wells, disposal injection wells, have been dumped into the Kern County aquifer. Now, this is a huge problem. Those people, those residents of Kern County know that they are going to get cancers up the road. It's not gonna have Antera's name on it. It's not gonna have big oil companies' name on it. But 10 years from now, cancers are gonna start showing up, because big oil has polluted the waters. How does Water Resources Board know that? Because there's thallium in the water, there's benzene in the water, there's tullene in the water, there's radon in the water, there's nitrates. This comes from oil drilling. And when our injection wells, disposal injection wells dump the water without regulation, while Dogger turns its back, an example of how they protect big oil, then the rest of us have to suffer from that. So, so I want you to understand that as well, in all this process, that Dogger says isn't always what Simon says, it's what the oil companies tell you. Okay. Gold Ring works for Big Oil, and he gets paid for Big Oil, and he probably makes good money for Big Oil. But his, but he knows what oil is doing, but public understanding isn't aware of what oil is doing. You know, I, I research a lot of this stuff and so forth. Not everyone has the time, or the energy, or even is concerned about what we do. Oh, power is gonna have its way anyway. So that's how most people think about it. Oh, you know, the big oil companies are gonna get their way anyway. Why should I fight them? A lot of people are just giving up on this. The people, the people aren't prepared for the 600 unknown chemicals. They aren't prepared for the silicon sand. They aren't prepared for the millions of gallons of water that takes to drill one well in the time of a drought. We're gonna have to ask ourselves, and I'm gonna illustrate this for you right now.
Excuse me, Mr. Marcus. You've exceeded the normal five minutes we allow for speakers. You're into the eighth minute now.
Okay, then I'll just conclude.
I would ask you to, to wrap up, wrap up your presentation, please.
Yes, I'll just conclude. I have oil. I have water. Which are you gonna drink? Because I'll tell you as a nurse, we are 65% water. If we contaminate our water, we contaminate ourselves. It's not oil that sustains life. It's water that sustains life. When are we going to promote, preserve, and protect the water that sustains us? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I've got two speaker cards. Apparently, it didn't speak. Neil Ohrtenberg. And Michael Stubblefield. And those, that concludes my speaker cards.
Okay. The letter from this county said, "Thank you for your letter of October 19, 2011." And then I didn't get everything down. Says finds merit in many of the proposed parameters under which the facility would operate. Now, in his interpretation, while it was up there, he said that basically everything was approved, and everything was signed off. That's quite different from finding many of the, it was like a draft proposal or something. I mean, it wasn't even a final thing, and it did not say everything was fine. It said many of the proposals, not things that were already implemented. So that has not, it's not relevant to the way he was representing it. I would just like to point that it was in the same area of the document.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers. Staff, comments?
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. I think we all have a little bit of something to add as far as the rebuttals go. I heard a few things today. I heard one of the speakers be very concerned about dust. I know our Air Pollution Control District, who does control dust, has been out to the site regularly in the last month, and, and if they find something out there, I'm sure that they would issue a, a notice of violation. But it's not that we're not pursuing that. There's different agencies looking at this site, as well as any other site, that receives a complaint. I've heard some things here that I want to talk about. One of them was that apparently I wrote a planning director determination. And I wanna, I want you to understand that. When I write a planning director interpretation, I, it's a formal interpretation. It's numbered. It has a place in, in the county that then requires me to, to come before a decision maker and amend the code if I am interpreting the code. Because clearly, the code gives me the ability to interpret, but that's the code, not the condition of approval. And it is a very formal item. So you don't get that from Exhibit J, when somebody writes and tells me, "Thanks for your interpretation, and here's what it is." That's, that's not what it is. That's just somebody writing me a letter, hoping that that's what I'll think about it. So there is no formal planning director interpretation on this. What there is, is a compliance agreement. And a compliance agreement is a very specific area. It's, it's, it's outlined in the code, and here's what it says. It's Section 8114-3.4, and it talks about monitoring and enforcement. And its enforcement activities shall be in response to confirmed violations and may include, and this is a may, may include such measures as drafting and implementing compliance agreements, inspections, public reports, penalty hearings, forfeitures of sureties, and suspension, modification, or revocation of permits. Those are all tools in our toolbox in response to us sending out a notice of violation. In this instance, it's unfortunate that the, the people here before us today are not the people that were before us at the time, different attorney, different consultant, different land use, that we had these meetings with. And the whole purpose of entering into a compliance agreement was to say, they were before us, it's strewn through the whole record, they were moving. This is a permit that expires in 2018. So for, for them to saying that they're investing $2 million on a site that has not only a CUP expiration date of 2018, which is all that they're vested in, but, and then it's, it's, it's one that is a non-conforming use, which means unless they get the law changed by then, it will not be allowed to continue, that's a huge investment to make. That was a personal choice, right, on their part. Entering into a compliance agreement saying, "We understand the predicament in front of us. We're moving to a new location." And that is what is spelled out in the preamble to the compliance agreement, which is part of the reason that we entered into it, was to say, "We'll just save this fight for another day. You're moving to another location. You understand your problem." It has a finite expiration date on it. So if you look in the compliance agreement, you know, it says, "Unless extended in writing by the county, the term for the compliance agreement expires on," and this one expired December 31, 2012, and I understand it was extended, "the decision of whether to extend the term of this compliance agreement shall be at the sole discretion of the Ventura County Planning Director." So it's a temporary agreement. It's temporary in the code, it's temporary how they said that they would apply it, it's temporary on the way that we assigned it. For them to say now, that's the way, that's the law of the land, and, and you need to give us this unlimited trips, is, is something that really I have not heard of before. So as I said on page nine of 22 of the staff report, Ms. Coleman recognized time and time again that the condition had a 24-trip limitation on it. And that is the impact, not just the impact of a sequo analysis, a public analysis, a public review of the process. We analyzed what they gave us. So it is nonsensical to say 24 tanker trips, but 500 other kind of trips every day that can bring something else in for this facility to operate. What, I mean, that would be, that's no analysis at all. It's 24, it's clear it was 24, it's been 24 all along, outside of the compliance agreement, when we were trying to bridge a gap between the moving. And that's all that that was. So also, it was, I heard Sally say that I did, that I said that we look to the dictionary to, to talk about things. And we do. The code says that. Not everything can be talked about in the code, so I didn't want people to thinking that was some off-the-cuff remarks I made. It says, "Section 810144, terms not defined. Terms not defined in this chapter shall be interpreted as defined in the Ventura County General Plan or convictional dictionaries in common use." That doesn't mean I just go to the dictionary and look up everything. It means in light of the whole record. What does the whole record say? And if there's a term that I need to find that's not defined, that's a place, that's one of the tools that we would go to, to take a look at that. There, I've heard several people say today, and I also got a, a letter from Mark Trout, who I called, it's one of the exhibits that you have, by saying, "If we, if they can't take all of this material here, my goodness, where will it go?" Well, the county does have another place that is permitted, and it's permitted not by an injection well, but by pipeline, and that is Santa Clara Valley wastewater. It is in Mission Rock Road, where this facility was set to operate. I did call them yesterday, because there were some rumors going around that they weren't open for business, and their president assures me that they are. And so that facility is up and operating, and it takes this very same type of material. So there is another location directly in the county that does that. And so that's, that's just my overall comments. I do want to let Mr. Baca have his rebuttal. Also, I'm sure Mr. Barnes. And then the, the folks down here from our watershed that have violation number two, and the reason that they're combined in there is because there's conditions of approval that says they need to be in compliance with all local and state regulations. And so their violation is included in our notice of violation, but they're here to, to discuss that and get some clarity.
Before we, before we proceed with that, I think I got the cart in front of the horse. Mr. Golden Ring, I believe, has rebuttal.
From my point of view, and that was one of the questions I was gonna ask, is I, I think a fairer way to unfold it is let staff rebut, or comment on my comments, and I can resonate back with what I think. And then if you wanna cycle back with them, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm blindsided by this set of comments.
It's, 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 it's your opportunity. So procedurally, I was, I, like I said, got ahead of myself.
Okay, all right. Well, then, and then, and then I'll do it as you direct. You are the boss. But I would... But I would.
Ordinarily, when we have an appeal, the appellant speaks. People in support of the appeal speak. People opposed speak. If there's any questions of staff, we have those. And then he gets a right to rebuttal. So that's how we normally do it. And then we have staff follow that. That's how we ordinarily do it. So I wondered why we skipped the rebuttal.
Yeah, no, and I know that you've done it that way. I just, if I might, especially if what I'm hearing is new and additional people are going to talk that's not in a staff report, it wasn't in their presentation, then from a fairness point of view, my view would be, I think I ought to hear that to be able to resonate back to you my comments.
I don't expect any additional speakers. And I certainly don't expect anything other than residual comments.
The only thing that's new is this, is this internal memo.
Right, no, no, I see Mr. Hubner here and others, and there was a reference from Ms. Pearlheart that watershed's now going to be coming in and talking with people who you haven't already heard from. Now, I'm not suggesting you're going to permit it. I'm just saying.
Okay, well.
I'm just saying, if I, it would be helpful if I hear what they're going to say.
I understand. You're up to bat.
Okay, you're the boss. Yeah, turn yourself on, if you would. If we could ask the audiovisual guy. I, I'll do it as you direct, and I would only ask, Mr. Chairman, that if you will consider, or, and you don't need to answer the question now, but if you will at least consider the opportunity for us to respond, because we're presumably going to hear things, and, at least in lawyer land, you usually get to be able to say, "This is why we disagree," if it's new stuff. So I'd ask you for your consideration of that. Let me, if I can, and I understand, as a lawyer, we are here on two technical NOVs, and I heard a lot of speakers. But I want you to know what's in your exhibit book, because I anticipated hearing some of these things. If you look at Exhibit S, and it has nothing to do with today's hearing, but just out of your being aware of it, Exhibit S, and for the community, is a hydrological study that was performed by the city of Oxnard on the issue of whether or not there was any indication of any problems with the reinjection materials from the Antera well contaminating or affecting groundwater or anything else. And you will find, if you choose to read it, that the, that was city of Oxnard did this study, not my client, and the city of Oxnard determined that there were no problems whatsoever. Again, I get it, it's not part of the hearing today, but I'm hearing community concern, and I think in fairness to you and to them, I chose to make that part of the record.
Thank you. Can I just jump in for a second?
Mr. Ndukas.
On page five of that, it talks about the injection volumes are routinely reported to Dogger. And I think that's one of the things that I was curious about.
Sure.
That it was based on those reports that it was determined that you were far in exceedance of your truck limits. Do you want to respond to that?
Well, I could tell you how Antera operates. As a regulated facility by Dogger, Antera reports monthly, I believe, to Dogger on two things. One is, as a producing oil well, every oil well in the state prepares a report on what's the production.
Maybe to more focus your response.
I will. I'm sorry.
So on page five of what you just directed us to look at, I noticed that the injection volumes are routinely reported. I'm talking about the ones that you take in, you know, the injection wells that you have as your business.
I get it, but I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. Dogger regulates coming out and going in. So on the injection well side, every month, Antera reports the reinjection material by quantity, and it is publicly posted. If you go to the Dogger website and you put in Dietrich 5, or I think it's 5 or 6, or the two reinjection wells, the amount of the material is posted on the Dogger website every single month. And Dogger checks the meters, they check the operations, and they check the reporting. So it's seamlessly and transparently available. So there's never been any secret.
So is it your position now that all of those injection volumes come from Antera's own wells on-site?
The Antera, each well must report the amount of injection. So if you and I were to open the website on Dogger and open up Dietrich, I don't remember what the number is, 5, I think, we can pick one, it will tell you the reporting by month of the volume into that well.
And that is how it was confirmed that Antera was exceeding the 24 truck limit. Was, in our staff report, we have figures showing that if you divide what, you know, the largest truck can, can truck in, deliver in, that they did the math, I guess, a number of different ways, and determined that you were exceeding your 24 truck trips. Is it your position now that those numbers come from Antera's own oil wells on-site?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. If you're, maybe I can resonate back to the question to you to make sure I'm hearing you. I think I'm hearing the question, what is, what are, what are the sources of the materials that are reinjected into the reinjection wells where that's reported to Dogger? And the sources of the material that is reinjected is, one source comes from offsite, one is onsite.
I'm focused on the number of trucks and the deliveries to the site.
Then I apologize, I'm not hearing you. Maybe I can get to it this way. There are three different sources of materials that go down a reinjection well at Antera. One is materials brought on-site. One is material that is self-generated.
Yeah, not everything injected.
One is, one is self-generated, because there's a producing well that generates material, that water and the like that goes down-site. And the third is generated from the management and production. Water comes onto the site, and things are processed and handled. So there are three components of materials, Commissioner, that go down the each reinjection well. Now, that then does not tie back definitively to the number of trucks. We told the county that their calculation was in error. We told the county, we were happy to provide them the truck trips. The dispute was, what was the required reporting? Because staff then took the position, all trucks over 24. And we said, "No, that's not how we read Condition 18." And based upon that, the documentation I've shared with you, and that unfolded. And then staff said, "We demand to have it," and they got it.
Thank you.
So I hope that answered your question. So in answer.
Your, your answer is, yes, we dispute those figures.
The initial.
The figures that were provided by, in the analysis, that figured that you were in, exceeding your 24 truck trips.
Well, if you're asking me to concede the 24 trucks as opposed to tanker trucks, I do dispute that. That's what I spent a discussion with you, whether you agree or disagree with me, on, is that's the nature of the dispute. If you're asking me, were Mr. Baca's initial calculations correct? They were not. We told him they were not. And he has, I think, attached to the staff report, the spreadsheets that we provided, where we identified the vehicles tanker and non-tanker by day. And we gave the entire truck record in each category to him. Now, they only showed you a combined, but it's, I believe in the staff report, and I would trust Mr. Baca would tell you, that we, we gave him that data, broken out by tanker and non-tanker, for all Class II materials coming on-site. So yes, that data was provided. And yes, if you tell me your determination is only 24 of any kind of vehicle, then the answer is, the numbers tell you that that was exceeded. Did I, did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. The second thing that I'd like to identify in the record for the benefit of your commission and for members of the public is Exhibit X. Staff asked Antera to have a traffic report prepared in the context of this process. You will note that this traffic report predates the notice of violation, because what staff was saying to Ms. Coleman, as she told you, was, "Well, you have different alternatives. Ask for an extension of what they now call their compliance agreement. Ask us for a modification. Ask us for the, we need to see a traffic study." And so Antera, in Exhibit X, prepared, or hired Penfield &amp; Smith, whom I assume you've seen repeatedly here as reputable folks, they did a traffic study. And if you look at this traffic study, not that it, again, has anything to do with this discussion that we're having here today around the notices of violation, what you'll find is no impacts. At 75 vehicles a day, which is what they defined as the threshold, which was discussed with staff, the project would not generate any project-specific impacts. You'll find that on page 12, at the project-specific conditions, and also following on page 13. So staff directed and requested that to be done as part of this conversation. And I get it, it's not part of the Condition 18 interpretation issue, but I heard conversation from members of the public, and I put it in here in anticipation of that, so that the record and the commission would know. Antera did it. It's been done, and this is, this is what it indicates. I do want to comment, if I can briefly, on one of the questions that was.
Let me, let me direct you to page nine of that Penfield &amp; Smith study that you just.
And I'm no traffic engineer, so if it's a technical question, please be generous.
I'm not a traffic engineer either. So, project trip generation, page nine. The current CUP allows for a total of 24 trucks per day from Monday to Saturday. Do you have a problem with that?
Yes, and that's because staff directed it to be reported that way. Staff said to Antera, and I'm happy to ask staff direct questions, and I would certainly appreciate that happening. Staff directed Antera around a conversation of two things. A CUP modification and a zone text amendment, as well as a compliance agreement solving this. Assume 24. The same way they said to Sally Coleman, please let me finish, the same way they said to Sally Coleman, "Write us a letter asking for the compliance agreement to be extended on the 24, and we'll consider it." And she did. And now they skewer her with it.
My, my, my focus was not on the 24. It was on the term truck.
Right. And.
There's no distinction between the two trucks per hour and the 75 trucks per day.
Well, if you're asking me from a traffic engineer perspective.
I am not.
The type of vehicle doesn't matter in terms of tanker or non-tanker. Because a traffic engineer is going to look at the rubber on the road, and whether that vehicle is hauling a tanker behind it, closed, or hauling a roll-off bin, or some other kind of thing, the traffic engineer's concern is the vehicle and the rubber on the road. That's how traffic engineers work. Which, of course, I might add, was why we were surprised when I asked staff, "Would you consider one tractor with two tankers?" So we're calling multiple things behind it, one vehicle, or two, or three. And staff said, "One." But a traffic engineer, I would think, would say it was two, because they're counting the wheels on the road. That's my impression of how traffic engineers work. In any event, I think we can agree, or I would hope, that traffic studies and hydrological studies are not what bring us here today. But I felt that, for transparency, your commission and the public should know, these have occurred. I do want to then comment on what, one of the things I heard, which was around the notion of the commission grappling with the issue of Condition 18 being ambiguous or nonambiguous. And it caused me to pause. And the reason it caused me to pause is that, from a lawyer's perspective, I'm not sure how someone is violated on something that is found to be ambiguous. It was, in that context, I'll remind you, that before the notice of violation was filed, when it became clear this was the dispute, I asked planning to agendize this matter so the ambiguity could be addressed before a notice of violation. Because we think it's clear, and we think there's been a determination. They obviously take a different position. But how does the county, as a regulatory agency, impose a violation on somebody where there is an ambiguity? It seems to me, from a fundamental fairness perspective, people ought to be able to have the ambiguities resolved, and then you act accordingly. So I have some concerns around that. And in that context, having heard Ms. Pearlheart's comments, and I understand it now was out of order, when she spoke to you, she said that she issues planning director interpretations on statutes or ordinances, and those are very formal. But she didn't talk about what this is, which is a CUP planning director interpretation. And she didn't answer the very direct question, "Did you or did you not meet with Antera and say what is reported in the letter as what you said?" Because it's certainly not in any document of denial, and she didn't say it. So I think we are left with the proposition that she did make that interpretation, and my client relied on it. She also indicated to you that the county made a decision in reaching this truck trip arrangement to save it for another day. But I would respectfully submit to you the incongruity. Because if it's a nonconforming use, I believe that your counsel will tell you that the planning director has no legal authority to expand the use. Cannot do it, not save it for another day. So either they have to say, "We erred," in which case, we're back to breach of contract and equitable estoppel and fairness and all the other things, or they have to say, "It had meaning. It was a deal." Now, I will tell you that I think I know what they're saying recently. And that is, in a letter that I received, and if I can ask you to, Craig, if you'll give me two seconds, Mr. Chair. If I'll, I'll ask you to look at Exhibit CC on this issue. This is a letter sent after the notice of violation to me from staff. Because as Ms. Pearlheart has said, I clearly sent a number of letters to her going, "We don't get it, what's going on here." So she's responding to some letters to me, from me, about the concerns and the like. So she says in the first page, "As we have discussed previously, Class II fluids are often received at the facility in." Class 2 fluids are often received at the facility in trucks other than closed-vehicle tanker trucks." So, we have this issue on the table. And I'm saying to them what I've said to you here today, which is, "How am I here? Why am I here?" And the answer is buried on Page 3. "In reviewing the matter, our office has determined that the previous and now expired compliance agreement was entered into error." Now, the last time I checked, if I make an agreement with somebody, that's not how it works. And people are entitled to rely on agreements, and people are entitled to rely on determinations and understandings. And so, of course, now we have the admission of this error around Mr. Law and Watershed Protection District, post-violation. And now we have, post-violation, this statement. And, at least in my world, a "we erred" when you're forced to have to confront the facts that I've laid out to you, when I put them on the table and say, "How and why are we here?" The response is, "Do-over, error." And so, here's the answer. We got to where we are by an error. And I just have a real difficult time on, as being a stakeholder in this process for my client, or my client being a stakeholder with that process. And, of course, nowhere in the NOV are we told, "Oh, we made an error." And I'm not aware of anything before September 5, where this hearing, I think, was already set. And we're putting our evidence on the table, saying, "We should be talking and not doing this," is that now the do-over card comes out. Don't look at the man behind the curtain pulling the levers, because he just makes errors. I would also briefly respond to the comments that I heard around, there's another source. And while, again, it's not related to this NOV, I do want to talk about that. That's Santa Clara Wastewater. It's the one other competitor in the county. Santa Clara Wastewater's disposal methodology is to do exactly what Antara does, which is to strip out the wastewater. And they put it down a pipeline into the Oxnard Sewer Plant. Now, we can then all talk about where the Oxnard Sewer Plant water goes. And we can talk about the environmental proposition around that. But, in that context, if you look at Exhibit HH, you'll see, this is your staff report to you in July of 2010, where the Santa Clara Wastewater folks were seeking a major modification because of an illegal expansion without obtaining the permits. And on Page 2, excuse me, on Page 3, they seek to modify their permit in 3 to process oil waste, drilling mud, tank bottoms, other sediments, et cetera, into recyclable products. That's what Antara does. Dispose of the material into the Oxnard Plant, and truck the balance off. And staff recommends to you on Page 5, excuse me, Page 6, the following. And this is in part a comment to Mr. Baca's notion that my client exceeded, without permission, 24, on, by his count, nine occasions. Many of which, by the way, were when Santa Clara Wastewater was shut down, and there was an emergency in the industry. This is the definition staff recommended to you around how to handle truck trips and emergencies. "The Santa Clara Wastewater facility would operate at any time during any day of the week, as necessary to meet the demand that may be placed on the city, the facility, or that may occur on an emergency basis. The hours stated are normal business hours, but there would inevitably be the necessity to operate the process either before or after normal hours as those occasions arise. Examples of emergencies are..." And they list them, "including drilling rigs, which are in process nonstop until drilling is concluded." Now, again, has nothing to do with this NOV, but what you will find, if you actually go through the project, through all the data, is Antara went to staff and said, "These things are emergencies. We would like to implement an emergency process." We were told, "Oh, no, you can't. It's an expansion of your operation, and we don't think it's an emergency." Meanwhile, they're defining into a permit proposal to you that, basically, they self-regulate Santa Clara Wastewater. And if you look at Exhibit II, here are the conditions that you all approved based upon the recommendations of the staff. And they are identical to staff's recommendations of unlimited operation, self-definition of this. And Commissioner Idukas, I refer you respectfully to Exhibit JJ. Because this is the consequence of this notice of violation. As staff took the position it did with Antara, and the word got out to my client's customers, "County may be squeezing you down," Santa Clara Wastewater went out on a first-call agreement. And here's one of them. And they said to the industry, "You either give us all of your material, and you contract to give it all, and none of it to Antara, or we're not going to take it, when you gotta get rid of it, because Antara's at 26 trips." And that's the disparage treatment. It's the picking of the winner around the industry with two companies doing business. And that's what's happening because of this notice of violation, and why we feel so strongly around the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Question?
Do you want to respond to this internal memo that we were given? Did you get a copy of this? It's a... John Broxie, okay. There's...
Or should I comment, perhaps, that Mr. Oxnard and I were co-counsel on a case 20 years ago? Yes, I'm happy to read. We can read it together. I think it's mischaracterized as described. It's not before you. Let me answer it this way, if I can, so that it will be perhaps helpful. Under the regulatory structure, every time a material that is regulated, in this case, Class 2 materials, there has to be what's called a Uniform Waste Manifest prepared. The Uniform Waste Manifest has three sections. The first section at the top is the generator. The generator is required to characterize and identify the material. They have to do that by knowledge, or testing, or however they do it. They have to do that for a number of reasons. They're giving it to a transporter. The transporter has to placard it, has to know how it's legal to transfer, has to know, in terms of emergency response, how it's dealt with. And it has to know where it can legally go. Generator fills that out, characterizes the load. The obligation is on the generator from cradle to grave. The generator characterizes the material. The transporter signs the Uniform Waste Hazardous, acknowledging it and receiving it. A copy stays with the generator. Transporter takes two or three copies. That then comes with the load to the facility. The facility looks at it. The generator has represented and characterized the material. The transporter has brought it. And the facility, such as Antara, then accepts it based upon the generator. Now, to answer your question, the issue of hazardous, and we're going to, I think, go far fetal of the NOV, but the issue of hazardous is an issue of the legal threshold of a type of material within the material. So that, for example, if the legal threshold of ethylmethyl-something is 1, and it's tested at .5, though that .5 is in it, as tested by the generator, it is not at the threshold, and therefore, not characterized as hazardous. So, when you read this, what you see is Antara's not taking frac fluids that are at that threshold. And a generator, if a generator is complying with the law, whether it's Oxy, or Era, or any of them else, they're obligated to state whether or not there's a threshold hit. And if there's a threshold hit, then that has transport consequences and obtaining consequences. So, if you're asking me, I think that this... You can read this in a way that says, "Antara is horrible and awful and evil, and we should blow them all up." But I think it's not that, frankly. And I don't, that's clearly not what is meant or said here.
Well, I'm just looking at the plain reading of the words. "Since the hysteria from the enviros is over fracking..." And, oh, that's not the part. This is it. It'll make us look like we give a crap about what the enviros think. Yes, we are sensitive to the concerns. And it's regarding calling frac fluid-produced water and not...
Well, and that's what I'm trying to help you understand, is that when water... If... And I have no idea if an oil producer is fracking in this county. That's not my world, that's not Antara's world. If a generator were to use a material in the operation of their well, fracking or not, and it is a regulated material, and it is contained within the water that comes out of the well, because that's what happens with oil, water comes out of the well, it is the generator's legal obligation to characterize and test that material. So, if you ask me, Commissioner, is it possible that a solvent, or a zine, or something could be within a produced water and below the legal threshold, so that it is not hazardous? So, is it possible for that to happen? Yes. And is it legal? Yes. And is it consistent with regulatory structure? Yes, because it's a threshold issue. It's not a zero issue, it's a threshold issue. And that's what it says, and respectfully, that's what the regulatory structure is.
Okay, well, it just was noteworthy to me how...
I'm not on mic. It was just noteworthy to me how very clearly Ms. Coleman said it in her internal memo.
Staff, final comment?
Can the public ask a question?
No. No.
Chair Rodriguez and Commissioners, I wanted to address a couple issues that came up during the morning part of the hearing. Mrs. Coleman mentioned that she does not agree with the determination of her facility being subject to NPDs Stormwater Industrial Permit. I wanted to mention that in June 2011, June 27, 2011, we received a letter prepared by Antara representatives stating that Antara is not subject to stormwater permit. We considered that, we disagreed with that determination, and we followed up, verified with the Regional Water Quality Control Board that the facility, based on the type of activities that are being conducted at the facility, is subject to the stormwater NPDs permit. The issue number two, I've heard a couple times from the Antara attorney saying that the Form SW1 is equal to SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And this is incorrect. The stormwater, in December 2011, this was after the 2011 NOV, when Antara's consultant submitted the Form SW1, which has the 13 best management practices. Those management practices are required for construction sites that are less than one acre. Now, that form lists BMPs, and Antara committed to implement those BMPs instead of meeting the requirement to be covered under the state permit and develop and implement Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So, the SW1 form, as I mentioned, includes the BMP TC1 for stabilized entrance. And just to read you from the, and I explain you what are the deficiencies in terms of what the BMP form requires and what's currently at the facility. And the purpose of this stabilized construction entrance, the BMPs, and the requirements of the BMPs in the TC1 is to reduce or eliminate the tracking of sediment onto public right-of-way or streets. The NPDs permits require that appropriate measures be implemented to prevent tracking of sediments onto paved roadways where significant source of sediment is derived from mud and dirt carried out from unpaved roads and construction sites. That form was mistakenly approved by Ugo Law, who at that time was engineer. And two years later, we received another public complaint about the mud being tracked onto the road. So, the issue number three that I wanted to address is the inspection form from March 16, 2014, that Antara's attorney brought up and pointed out issues with that form and mistakes that were done. This form also included a description of deficiencies that were found at the time of the inspection regarding that stabilized the implementation of the BMP TC1. Let me just... So, this is on the same inspection report dated March 14, 2014. Inspection performed in reference to aforementioned complaint, met with Operations Manager Rose Hankins, and suggested improvement of the BMP. Moved shake racks closer to the main road and addition of rock and gravel over dirt to prevent future complaints, which implies also prevent sediment-mud tracking onto the road. Also contacted Sally Coleman, Environmental Manager, and discussed these BMPs improvements. So, when the contracted inspector returned that form and provided us with the picture from his inspection, we also reviewed the historical files, the previous 2011 NOV. And we realized that Antara committed to implement the TC1 under the form that they submitted in 2011, that was reviewed and approved, and based on the inspection in March 2014, which was done in response to public complaint, the deficiency of implementation of this BMP were found. And that's why they were out of compliance with our county stormwater ordinance. And also, by filing the NOI, they are still not in compliance with the stormwater permit, that BMP needs to be improved and to prevent any further tracking of the mud. Now, we met on August 1 with representatives of Antara, and we discussed the issue, the implementation of this BMP. And it was agreed by, we met with Mrs. Coleman and Mrs. Tom Staben, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Staben. And we all agreed that the best option would be to pave that driveway.
From the point of view of stormwater control, the best option would be to pave the driveway, but paving the driveway, they can't, because it's an expansion of use? That's something that I would like to...
If I may interrupt Evelina just briefly. I'd like to describe the sequence of events in the great driveway caper. You remember that Mr. Law informed us, informed me directly, when I asked him, "Are all the stormwater violations abated?" And he said, "Yes, they are." Well, we cannot grant a permit to expand a non-conforming facility unless it is required by law. Well, at that point, it wasn't required by law. We find out later, from further analysis from Watershed Protection and a later notice of violation, or later complaint, that they're not in compliance, and that the recommendation of the Watershed Protection District to meet the requirements of state stormwater law is that the driveway be paved. We've informed the applicant that, okay, since it's for the compliance with state... We've informed the applicant that, okay, since it's for the compliance with state law, that stormwater regulations, we can approve a driveway. Now, the course, I'd like to speak without being interrupted. And so I informed them that we're ready to review any application you wish to submit for a permit adjustment to install a driveway on the site. The correspondence I received from Mr. Goldenring was, no, that's not good enough. You have to commit right now that you're going to approve it. And then I responded by saying, I cannot commit to approve something I haven't seen yet. And that's where it has been left, and we have not received an application to approve a driveway or even consider one. So that's where we're at. We can approve a driveway because it's required to meet state law, which is, even though it's a nonconforming facility, we can approve it. But we can't approve it before we see it.
May I allow to make a close question to the Chair and the considered public...
Yeah, I have other comments if it's my turn.
Just pose this, I'm sorry, do you have more comments?
I have considering more comments, I was just adding to the issue with the stormwater. The appellant has relied on the phrase, "plain meaning" of the permit condition. And, well, first, I'm going to talk about the permit condition, then I'll describe the circumstances of the compliance agreement of 2012. Well, the plain meaning of the condition is that you are allowed to have no more than 24 tanker truck deliveries per day. And I would change the term tanker to fuzzy kittens, and say you're allowed to have no more than 24 fuzzier kittens deliveries per day. It doesn't mean that you can deliver giraffes, elephants, and any other assorted beast, and because you're limited to what the terms of your permit say. And I would go to the plain meaning of condition of approval number five of CUP 531-1. It says, "All facilities and uses, other than those specifically identified on the plot plans and in the conditions of the permit, are prohibited until and unless they have been authorized by the planning director or planning commission." It further states, "Any alterations or changes to the approved project descriptions, such as an increase or decrease in deliveries, shall require the filing and approval of an appropriate modification application." There has been no modification application filed and none approved, and so it specifically says here that you can't have an increase in deliveries without a permit modification. So that is plain reading. You don't get anything, you don't get to do anything that your permit doesn't specifically say you can. And so the concept that it says we can have 24 non tanker truck deliveries, but we can have non tanker truck deliveries, well, that would basically eliminate all CUPs in the county, because anything it specifies in your CUP, you can have, and if it's not specified, you can have even more. And so that is both inconsistent with the permit we have and essentially inconsistent with every CUP in the county. You know, in the, as is clear in the correspondence at various places, including the portions the correspondence raised by Mr. Goldenring, that is the portions he didn't read, the entire concept of the compliance agreement was, we don't need to have this fight because you're going to be moving the facility in a year. And we have correspondence from the representatives of the applicant at the time, where that moving the facility included a new disposal well in the Santa Paula area. And so the facility itself, and it even talks about relieving pressure at the mission, at the Woolley Road facility. Entering into a compliance agreement with a conditional use permit holder to give them time to abate in a violation and get back into compliance is a normal and standard process. You know, I guess you could look at it at this point and say, it's regrettable how this has occurred, because obviously the, this particular holder of a conditional use permit became to feel entitled that the temporary compliance agreement that expired on October 30th, 2013, represented a permanent condition, and somehow was a permit modification outside of the view of your commission or any other decision maker in the county. And so it just didn't happen. There was a comment about that this matter should have been agendized before your commission to review the terms of this condition. Well, as Ms. Prilhart said, they could have asked for a formal planning director interpretation, and we would give one, as we normally do, and if they didn't like that interpretation, they could have appealed it to your commission. That's the formal process by which you agendize a question of interpretation. And remember, the code gives the director the ability to interpret parts of the code itself. It doesn't specifically reference interpretations of permits. Permits read as they read. And I would say that I've never heard of a letter coming to the county, to the planning director, saying, "This is the interpretation that you agreed to." And then, absent a response, you make the assumption that, well, they must agree to it, and now it's an official interpretation. Because we get letters all the time for people saying, "This is what we think the way it should be." And if we don't respond to them, like the Shepherd-Mullen letter of 2011, that somehow we agree with it. And so that's just nonsensical, to use a popular word. And I would point out that, you know, the estimate I made in the June 25th notice of violation of, you know, of the truck trips, that were clearly above 24 per day, was based upon their giving me six weeks of trucking data, which turned out to be just tanker trucks, but six weeks of trucking data, and then applying that number of trucks to the amount of disposal they had reported to Dogger. And it was clear from that data itself that it was over the 24. Well, Mr. Goldenring just said that, well, my data was inaccurate. Well, it was inaccurate on the low side. They actually did almost twice as many trucks as I had estimated. So while my data was inaccurate, it was inaccurate in his favor. And when we find, and when he says, "We've turned in all the truck data," that was after nine months of asking, and in the final, the 10th attempt to get them to self-report what's going on, we had to invoke a section of the code that says that if you do not report, and when you have a performance standard, you must report the information to the planning director, and if you do not report, that is grounds for a notice of permit revocation. So that, they finally reported that on September 12th, gave us the truck data. Well, of course, that showed us that they had twice as many as we even thought in the first notice of violation. So I would tell you that the condition five, condition one, condition 18, the application filed by the applicant, the application form filed by the applicant, the traffic mitigation fee paid by, agreed to and paid by the applicant, all circle around 24 trucks of any type per day. And so you get 24 tanker truck deliveries. That's what the permit says. Absent an interpretation by the county that we can count non tanker and other types of vehicles as part of the tanker truck number, then you don't get any of those other vehicles, because they are specifically prohibited by condition five. So they get 24 trucks, and if they want us to read the plain language, then they're out of the mud processing business, and they can only take tanker trucks, if that's what they want to read. But in any case, they only get 24 truck trips. There was a question about staff asking for a traffic report. Well, currently, the applicant, Antera, has applied for a text amendment. At the time that this was being discussed with Mr. Wright at our permit counter, they wanted to file for a CUP modification to increase their truck trip number, and Mr. Wright, as he normally would, saying, "Well, if you're going to be increasing a truck number, you need to have a traffic study as part of your CUP mod." Well, they decided not to turn in the CUP mod at this time, because they have to wait and see if the board screens through the text amendment that's going to be considered in January. But if they ultimately have a CUP modification application before us to increase their allowed number of truck trips, they're going to need a traffic study, like anyone else would. There was an issue about that counting what is a truck, and that a single tractor with two trailers counts as one trip. Well, you may recall the Grimes Rock mining project, and Mr. Goldenring was there representing the operator. We certainly counted each one of his trucks, which are doubles carrying aggregate, as a single truck trip. And that's how it was counted in the traffic study, and that's how traffic impact fees were calculated and addressed. So there's no shock there that we count one tractor as one vehicle. And again, I quote from Mr. Goldenring, he says, and he just said it just a few minutes ago, "Whether a tanker, roll-off bin, or some other kind of thing, you know, is coming to the site..." Well, I'm sorry, but if you have, if you strictly read the permit condition, you don't get some other kind of thing. In fact, condition five specifically prohibits you from getting some other kind of thing that is not specified in your permit. So I would, I'd put this on the, under the category of no good deed goes unpunished. We tried to work with this facility, we demonstrated flexibility, and in accordance with the ordinance, which allows the planning director to enter into compliance agreements to assist people to get into compliance, that's what we did. And we allowed two years to go by where this permit was being exceeded, and we knew it was, in order for them to relocate the facility to an appropriately zoned parcel and continue their business. I would point out that Santa Clara wastewater is zoned M3. It's in an industrial zone. And in M3 zone and in the open space zone, Class II waste disposal facilities are allowed, are conditionally permitted use. Currently, they're not a conditionally permitted use in the AE zone, and they haven't been since the year 2000. And so there was one last thing where we've been accused of picking the winner. And this goes to this argument of disparate treatment. In 1998, the operator of Antera, the former operator, Anodyne Energy Services, they applied for a permit for 24 truck trips per day. That would be two per hour for the hours from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Two times 12 is 24. And that's what, they got exactly what they asked for. The project description that was read to you by Mr. Goldenring for the Santa Clara wastewater facility, that project description wasn't written by the county staff, that is the proposal of the applicant. And so they proposed to have 80, up to 80 truck trips per day, and also recognizing that, you know, they recognize, just like Antera does now, that the oil business runs around the clock, and there's various things that are considered sort of urgent and emergency, they considered, they put right into their permit proposal that emergencies will be defined in the following way, and that we can modify our hours of operation only, only hours, to take in additional material. That provision for emergencies does not include any additional truck trips. And so, and that's actually, Antera's, their provision for emergencies does allow the director to give additional truck trips, which is not the case at Santa Clara wastewater. So I think that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I?
Please.
Chair Rodriguez?
I was just going to ask about the driveway.
Oh, okay. Actually, go ahead, because I, my comments are more kind of legal, summing things up, so.
Commissioner Dikus.
At this point, they've paid $145 encroachment fee. They have expressed an interest in paving it and having a driveway and not worrying about the aggregate size or the fiber that collects the sediment. If it's the direction of this commission, is that something that can move forward?
It can move forward now without any direction of the commission. We're stand ready to receive their application and approve it unless we see something that is unapprovable. But clearly, if it's required to meet stormwater regulations, and that's the information we're receiving from the watershed protection district right now, it can be approved. I just can't tell you today, absent seeing the application, that the application's approved before you hand it to me.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez, members of the planning commission. I'm going to repeat other things that were said by Mr. Baca and planning staff, but I just want to do my best to put them in a legal perspective for you in terms of stating the planning division's position. You know, obviously, the, probably the key issue before you today is, you know, what does a permit condition 18 mean when it says 24 tanker trucks only? And in terms of the law that guides you in answering this question, I wanted to point out to a case that is cited, actually in Antera's binder, the Exhibit F, a legal opinion that they commissioned by Shepherd-Mullen. The case is called Stone versus Board of Supervisors, 1988, 205 Calup III, 927, 935. In that case, states, quote, "The agency must interpret the conditions it imposes in a reasonable manner, consistent with its intent," and now this is key, "at the time the conditions were enacted." And so that case is telling us as a planning division, we need to look at that condition in the context of when it was enacted, not sitting here in a vacuum, suspending reality, and ignoring everything else and focusing on a few words in the condition itself. You have to look at it in a larger context, and that only makes sense. And so, as you've heard today repeatedly, Antera, I should say, Antera's predecessor specifically asked for 22 Class II disposal truck trips as part of its 1998 CUP modification. It did not ask for 24 tanker truck trips and an unlimited amount of non tanker truck trips for Class II disposal. It asked for 24 truck trips for Class II fluids. That is exactly what it asked for. Antera, we've been here for almost seven hours today. Antera has offered no evidence whatsoever to explain, even try to explain the gap between what Antera asked for in its permit application and describing the project and what made its way into the permit condition. All Antera, I think, has said is that, well, planning drafted it, so it's their fault if, you know, if it's incorrect, and we get the benefit. That's not true. And legally, that translates into my mind is they've offered no evidence to support their interpretation of that condition as allowing an unlimited number of non tanker trucks delivering Class II fluids. And that's also incorrect and unreasonable, and would require all of you to suspend reality, because it would, in my mind, be a clear violation of the California Environmental Quality Act, because it obviously could have a significant environmental impact by allowing hundreds of truck trips to go to the site every day without any sort of environmental review. And I'd like to remind you that the environmental review for this 1998 modification was a notice of exemption. And the notice of exemption said they're making minor modifications to the site, and they're allowing Class II, acceptance of Class II drilling fluids. And the project description specifically limited that to 24 truck trips, not 24 tanker truck trips, 24 truck trips. So that was a project that was analyzed and found exempt under SEQA. It would also, allowing an unlimited number of non tanker trucks would also violate the county's traffic impact mitigation fee. As you've heard, the traffic impact mitigation fee, I'll point to, it's CUP condition 27E was calculated based on 24 truck trips. Again, that was a project, not 24 tanker truck trips, 24 truck trips. If that was the analysis, then how do you get to an unlimited number? And if that was the amount of truck trips for which Antera paid the temp fee, then how do you get to an unlimited number of truck trips? Again, you'd have to defy reality to get there. There's been no explanation of how that could occur, or why that was the intent, or why that's reasonable. And again, I would like to remind you, in terms of the sentence in condition 18 referring to trucking having to occur between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., as Mr. Baca explained, it was a preexisting oil use at the site, and that use continued, and there were no truck trips limits with regard to those specific oil operations. And so the reasonable interpretation of that previous sentence is that it defined the hours of operation of those unlimited trucking trips that Antera's predecessor was already allowed to continue. With all due respect to my colleague Linda Ash, who earlier opined that your planning commission has to somehow look skeptically at the planning division's interpretation of condition 18 because we somehow vacillated in interpreting that, I just think there's no evidence in the record to show that we vacillated at all. And I think that whole notion was, it's basically a straw man argument that's been put forth by Antera. by Antera, that by, by somehow entering into this compliance agreement, which, which, again, was a temporary arrangement, legally, it could not have modified the permit, and the whole purpose of it was to, that we agreed to disagree with Antera, that we weren't going to find them and that they could have some additional truck trips as a convenience to them while they looked into moving their facility. That's all it was. It had a set expiration date. We, nothing that, in that compliance agreement, as a matter of law, I would argue, but represented any sort of contract or CUP interpretation by the planning division. And so I, I just, I disagree that we vacillated at all, or that you have to look at the planning division's common sense interpretation of Condition 18 with some sort of skepticism. And as Mr. Baca pointed out, Antera's position seems to be that the, the CUP is not ambiguous regarding the meaning of tanker truck in the context of the 20, 24 truck trip limit. If that's the case, then as Mr. Baca explained, all they get is 24 truck trips based on CUP Condition Number 5, which says you only get the uses which are specifically stated in this permit. And so if that's what they want, fine, but they're still in violation of the CUP based on evidence in the record that shows they've, they've blown past that limit as well. And again, planning, as, as is our job, we reasonably interpreted that tanker truck, truck language to, to give it a reasonable meaning, and really to try to do Antera a favor in terms of the 24 truck trip, trip limit. And just in, in terms of, you know, the question of whether, how to interpret the CUP, if, if you do need an ambiguity, again, our position is that there's an ambiguity based on the obvious gap in the record between the project description, what was asked for, and Condition Number 18. What, what does 24 mean in terms of the delivery of Class II fluids? So I think there's an inherent ambiguity in that language. And so then you have to look at the, the instrument as a whole, the CUP as a whole. And so then that's where you get into Condition of Approval Number 5. And again, if, if Antera's urging you to just focus on tanker trucks, if that's how they want to interpret it, then fine, they, all they get is delivery of Class II liquids in tanker trucks, if they're going to be strict interprettist, constructionist rather. In terms of Antera's reliance and equitable estoppel arguments, they, they were difficult for me to follow logically with my lawyer hat on, but I think what they're saying is that because the planning division entered into a compliance agreement that temporarily gave them more non-tanker truck trips, or more, more truck trips in general of Class II fluids, that somehow we're to stop from actually having them comply with their permit conditions once that compliance agreement expired. And to the extent that's their argument, their reliance obviously wasn't reasonable on the, on the compliance agreement, because again, it had a set expiration date, and the, the county was clear, once it finally did expire, that they have to comply with the conditions of their CUP. And so there's no reasonable reliance. And, and in terms of Mr., Mr. Goldenring's statements regarding, you know, error, an error was made in the compliance agreement, I, I don't understand how that supports Mr. Goldenring's, or Antera's position. The, the county's point in that letter was that, in retrospect, maybe it wasn't such a good idea for us to enter into that compliance agreement at all. Maybe we should have had this fight with Antera three or four years ago. And so Antera received the benefit of the increased truck trips for over two years based on that error. And so I don't see how that, how that helps their argument at all. That's all I have. I'm more than welcome to answer any questions.
Questions, staff, Commissioner Dukas.
Somebody came up to us at lunch and said, "What's the doctrine of latches?" Would you want to explain that in, in terms of how, how we should consider it?
Well, I, I, the doctrine of latches is when a, a party refrains from exercising a legal right, and then the other party relies on that and, and basically, in, in charting their course forward. And so Antera hasn't articulated why, or how this do, this doctrine applies here, but again, I think the, the concept is that the county refrained from enforcing the 24 truck trip limit for a few years, and therefore, we have no legal right to enforce it now. But of course, the record, you know, doesn't bear that out at all with the 2011 notice of violation, the compliance agreement, and now this hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have, and members of the commission, I just have one other item very briefly. As part of the modification of CUP 531 in 1998, the permit, remember, the original permit was, was granted in 1956. And between 1956 and 1998, there actually were some ordinance amendments. And most of them there, Mr. Westner was there for most of them.
I agree.
Yep. But one, and, and so there were various ordinance amendments that are now in our code for oil and gas type of operations, and they were incorporated into the permit. And among those were, and I'll read this, this is attached to the permit, "No condition of a conditional use permit for uses allowed by this chapter shall be interpreted as permitting or requiring any violation of law or any lawful rules or regulations or orders of an authorized government agency. When more than one set of rules apply, the stricter one shall take precedent." And so that just covers the relationship that we are between our permit and the Dogger permit, which they have to have both to operate this facility. So the stricter one shall apply. So there's nothing in the Dogger permit that takes precedent over the county's permit. That's all I have.
Thank you. Nothing else? I think all, all testimonies concluded, public hearing is closed, open for deliberations.
Since I was here in 1957, thank you for reminding me. And The Lone Ranger was the lead TV show at that time. Boy, we've got a whole lot of information today, and I want to thank the public that stayed. This is an ongoing situation that has been blending a lot of things. Some of you did not receive the benefit of the workshop we held not too long ago. Some of you definitely didn't get the benefit of what we recently went through as far as the Pyru matter. However, this is bringing to point what we have to do as commissioners at this point in time. And I'm going to be real honest with you, I've vacillated back and forth all day long. Mr. Goldenring, you're a very convincing speaker. Okay. I understand the situation that staff is in. And at the same time, the fact we get two eloquent attorneys from the county council's office, I wonder what the county's doing today as far as legal authorities. Finishing with the humor, I have been back and forth on this all day, and I can see when it says 24 trucks, but it says very specific type of truck, and does not mention anything else. I was struggling with that back and forth, except for, again, I'm going to come back to the real specific point that I want to make clearly here. This commission is charged with evaluating conditional use permits. And I want to emphasize the word conditional. And use is the fact that it comes here because it's not clearly a ministerial permit over the counter, but something that may be permitted if certain conditions are met. And I'm going to go back to what we did just a couple weeks ago in allowing it to exploratory wells. We put conditions down on that body and with no expectations that it was a forever thing. And the reason I say that is we do represent the public. This is a public hearing, quasi judicial, but public, and we have to follow those rules. And therefore, the public has a reliance that we will evaluate a permit that is conditionally approved, not granted by right. So when we look at the conditions at that time, all right, we were just getting into this world where we were delivering this type of Class II product, waste. And that's the first note I wrote down here. It was, we were struggling, how much should be allowed? And staff properly pointed out that was the reason why it was given a notice of exemption under CEQA, not any kind of initial study, no, no reason to do an NMD, no reason to go to a full-blown EIR, because as Mr. Goldenring properly pointed out, a certain threshold did not get met. So therefore, the CUP relied on that notice of exemption. And within that CUP, as staff properly pointed out, item number five, that all facilities and uses other than those specifically identified on the plot plans are in the conditions of which are prohibited. And the final paragraph says, "Any alterations or changes to the approved project description, such as increase, decrease in," magic word here, "deliveries, shall require the filing and approval of appropriate modification, application." So if we're going to go with a plain meeting, I think Condition 18 could have been better written back then, but I think Condition 5 is very clear to me in its plain meaning. So that's the side of the fence I'm sitting on right now, and my apologies for the diatribe, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Maggie.
I must admit that I vacillated with this myself a little bit, because I kept looking at that Condition 18, and I said, "Ah, you know, there is some ambiguity there to some respect, but when you're talking about two trucks maximum an hour, you can't get more than 24 trips out of it." And Condition 5 as well. That, that pretty much summed it up for me. But I'd like to thank our lawyer, Mr. Barnes over there, well, their lawyer, I guess, really summed it up well from a legal standpoint, and that gave me some clarity I didn't quite have all the way through this. So I want to thank him for that. That's it.
Well, like everyone else, I've struggled with this one way and the other, but I find that there was not a great deal of common sense applied to this whole situation, and I'm appalled that we're even here. I'm appalled that we couldn't work this out between the county and Antera. Certainly on the second phase of this, this permit thing is just beyond me. I, I cannot support the county on its finding regarding the permit. I think it's catch 22 that they couldn't fix the problem if they are indeed required to do it. So I'm not supporting the county's position on the permit. And quite frankly, I can't support the county's position on the first issue, on the number of trips. I don't think they've met the burden. I think there's a significant amount of ambiguity and a certain amount of culpability in the discussions and the agreements back and forth. Now, you can argue, you can argue either side of this, I think, and it's, it's a horrible situation to be in here. But I, I think, in my mind at least, the county has not met its burden on either, either issue. And I could go into it further, but as I said, I'm really shocked and surprised that we're even here. This should never have happened.
Commissioner Dukas.
I couldn't disagree with Commissioner Onstott more. I think the county has met its burden. I think it's absurd to, to come up with anything other than two times 12 equals 14. Whether those are deliveries of whatever kind of, two times 12 is 24. There is no question at all that they, they needed, from a business standpoint, to exceed that number, but they're caught by this non-conforming use, and it sounds like they, they weren't aware that there was, you know, this change in 2000. And so I have sympathy, you know, just as I did for Hagel Lumber, that, that is caught in a similar situation where there's, there's no possibility, given the current laws. So I think that, good luck to you on your, on your zone amendment, or if, if you choose to move your operations to the other location, good luck to you on that. But for this, I think it's, it's absolutely crystal clear that they've exceeded the, the number of truck trips that were allowed, analyzed, and paid for. With regard to the, the stormwater, I think that's a little fuzzier, and I think they're in a catch 22, you know, can we turn, can we, can we pave it, or can we not pave it? But certainly, it's not something that, you know, it's not rocket science. You can just get a bigger aggregate and put down the, whatever that material is to catch your sediment and, and be done with it. You know, have a deep enough base for your trucks to not track out things. That seems, you know, pretty simple, but, but there's, there's no question at all that from a business standpoint, there's a need for these injection wells. They're, they wanted to provide services to the, the small operators in the county, and they're just caught in this, in this circumstance of being a non-conforming use and unable to expand. So I think it's, it's clear that, I'll go ahead and make the, the motion to move the recommended actions to deny appeal case PL 140100, and make the rest of the actions in our staff report, 1 through 5.
Before we get to that point, and ask for a second, I'd like to say that it's ironic, as I sit here, that this is, this is before us today, because as I said during my disclosure, I traveled that road with some degree of regularity. I know it. It's a two-lane road. I've seen, I've been around Oxnard long enough to, to know and see how it's grown. I've had occasion to, to come off of Royce onto Woolley, traveling westbound, unbeknownst that this issue would ever be in front of me. And followed tanker trucks in westbound on Woolley on more than one occasion. And on more than one occasion, I've seen them pull over the shoulder of the road, just shore of the facility, onto the shoulder of the road, which in itself creates a little bit of a traffic situation because it's a narrow, once they're there, there is no shoulder. It's a narrow road. I think there's a ditch on the other side of the road, or there's a, as I recall, a windbreak in there someplace. It creates a traffic situation. On one specific time that I can recall, following the truck in, there were already three trucks parked in front of it on the shoulder of the road, so I assumed the truck I was following was going to wait there, turn to get in. That's certainly more than two truck, two trips a day, obviously, if you use that as a general descriptor of the amount of trips that might come in another facility. I certainly, I, I can sympathize with the comment I think Mr. Delgado made about the fact that he rolled by there once, or stopped once, and there were 15 trucks there or immediate vicinity to it, and so he assumed something was going on. That kind of observation, my personal observation, would, would lead me to think that, that the deliveries are coming beyond the immediate area of Ventura County, which is neither here nor there. It's just, you know, one of those issues, and I'm not going to begin to speculate on, on where that might be coming from. Common sense, plain language, common sense, when this thing was written in 58 or 55, what in the, when it was written, I think it was pretty clear what they, what was meant. I think any issues related to traffic, traffic mitigation, traffic mitigation fees were taken into consideration based on the number of 24 trips per day. And I think the fact, it's almost as if we're playing semantics with an issue, and if it wasn't said, then it must be allowed. playing semantics with an issue, and if it wasn't said, then it must be allowed. And I think the intent was what I interpret in that to be 24 trips per day. And I don't have any issue at all with staff's finding and recommendation on that, that there is a violation. I, like my commissioners, I'm a little wobbly on the other thing, on the other issue of permit requirement regarding the drive and entry and exit. Certainly, there's other activity going on in the immediate area of that driveway. We have, it's completely surrounded by agriculture. At this time, I think it's strawberries. I'm not sure if that's the only entrance in and out of that strawberry field. I doubt it, but again, I wasn't, I've never looked for it, and I certainly haven't been back to that location since this item was calendared in front of us here. I just, I'm speaking from my recent memory. I am inclined to recommend, follow staff's recommendation on this issue and move to deny, but we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Or do we, or we have further, and then discuss it after the fact? Do we have a, do we have a second?
Yeah, just, you seconded. I just want to, along with everybody, I'm really fuzzy on the second violation. That one, it was like, what? And I could see the catch 22 that they felt they were going to be into. Well, to solve the problem, you need to do this, free guys. And then you said, well, no, that might be an expansion of the original. So, I can understand the frustration that the applicant might get into. So, but at the same time, I agree with Commissioner Dukas, there could have been other ways to resolve it that I think that would have been acceptable to the permitting entity. So, I just wanted, I forgot to bring that up on the dial. With that, I'm ready to vote, Mr. Chair.
Did we have a second? Any other discussion?
How do I vote?
You take that little black thing, and the left button.
No, yeah, that's, the motion is to...
The motion passes four to one to deny the appellate's request. Moving on with the agenda, discussion items, a report from the planning director on board actions and other matters, followed by items the planning commission may wish to introduce.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. The only thing that I have is your schedule for next week. So, we have a item, two items on October 30th, and then we have our wireless communication facilities ordinance scheduled for November the 20th. So, I don't have anything new to report since last week unless you have something for me.
I just have one thing. Kimberly, I believe it was, from the Ojai newspaper, regarding issues, they wanted to contact me about that. Never called. I called her, she never called back.
Didn't ever call? Okay, all right, thank you.
Kim, I have something that's come up, and I discussed it with you some time ago. I'm under subpoena on criminal case for the 27th of October. It's a 1997 homicide. I'm told that it's going to be trailing probably about a week. And so, I'm available, I think, that week, as I've told Lori, and I think I'm available the next week, but there is that possibility that something may prevent that. I'll let you know as soon as I know. I think right now, we have, what, November 2nd is our next meeting, or after the 30th? Or is that clear?
20th.
20th, okay, so it may not be an issue. Okay, thank you. With that, we're adjourned, I think.